All right, good evening. This is Luke Revan. I'm the Assistant Township Manager here at EBRandywine. I'm addressing you in my capacity as the online moderator for this regular session of the Board of Supervisors. Due to the Corona, the COVID-19 pandemic and to protect the health and safety of township officials and our residents, the Board has conducted this meeting by webinar. This meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the Township's YouTube channel. Public notice of this meeting was posted on the Township's website on May 29th, consistent with Act 18 of 2020. The agenda for the meeting is also posted on the website at ebrandywine.org/AgendaCenter and is also visible on your screen. Chairman Kyle Scrivner and members of the township staff, including myself, are present in the Township building for the meeting and will be operating on the control panel for this webinar. Joining us remotely is Vice Chairman Jason Winters and Township Solicitor Kristen Camp. All other parties joining us can hear me, but your own phones and computer microphones are muted, so we cannot hear you. To enable an organized meeting, we're following the following procedure. I ask that all participants wait to be recognized by the chairman before speaking. To be recognized, you must first ask me, as moderator of this webinar, to unmute your audio connection. I think you can tell by some of this feedback that the fewer mics that are on at any given point, the better. You may request it at any time via the chat feature located on the left side of your screen. Each person recognized by the chairman should state their name and their address before asking a question. With that, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Chairman Scrivner.
Thank you, Luke. Welcome to EBRandywine Township Board of Supervisors regular session for Thursday, June 18, 2020, 6:30 PM. Just a reminder that rules of public comment for public meetings established in 2001 O.A. At the time allotted to each individual making comments, there'll be three minutes on what's otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted with discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. I'm gonna turn it over for public comment on non-agenda items if Luke, if you are seeing
Yes, Luke, I'm here.
My own advice, I muted my mic and then I didn't turn it back on. We have one person who asked to be, to present, or to speak to the board at this time, and then I'm going to be asking members of the audience who would like to speak on a non-agenda item to send a message to me using the chat feature. But Bruce Rawlings has his time and his mic is unmuted.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Good evening. This is Bruce Rawlings, Planning Commission Chairman, and I have two topics I would like to ask the supervisors. I've asked this a couple of times, and I know it's an issue for the township is updating the Traffic Impact Committee. Is there ever been a meeting scheduled for this year to start working on this? Who is on it? Which supervisor is on the committee? And should this be considered to be tied into the task force since it's not moving, hasn't been moving forward? So between Jason and Kyle, I don't know if any of you are on this board or not, and I think it's important to move forward in getting this taken care of.
Okay.
The second question I have, go ahead.
No, no, I was gonna ask you your second, I was gonna ask you your second question. We'll do them both at the same time. That's fine. Sorry.
Okay. The second question is, it's been coming up in our Planning Commission meetings, is reference to the Loop Road. Originally, there was two Loop Roads, one through the Weaver property and one what we call Eastville Extension. As the Planning Commission Chairman, we need to know where the supervisors stand to confirm that we should be considering this as a viable option of planning for the township, or is this gonna be off the record? You will be seeing a plan tonight from one of your applicants in referencing trying to help the township extend this Eastville Extension, which is supposed to be a state As a Planning Commission member, we see lots of value for this particular roadway going through this site, and we need and the help with future development of our township. Lastly, I just heard tonight that the school district is gonna be purchasing the McCausland property, which is right across from where the exit would be from this particular site. Kyle, have you had some questions?
No, so I'll start by answering your first question. The last Traffic Impact Meeting was, and Scott, please correct me if I'm wrong, I want to say 2017 or 2018. The Traffic Impact, at that time, I was definitely a member of the board, and I believe Hud Volk was the chairman of the Traffic Impact Committee. The committee did fall somewhat behind and was scheduled, and we had very, very few people interested in responding to the next meeting. Scott, I believe, had set something up just before the COVID-19 hit, and I believe that was the last meeting that we had set up that fell apart unfortunately because of that. So to answer your first question, I was one of the members on it. I don't believe Jason was, because I think the last meeting was prior to his engagement as a supervisor. And I'm gonna let Scott hit some details to what I just stated, and then we'll go to your second question and I'll answer that.
Thank you, Kyle.
The last meeting was actually in, I believe it was October of 2014. I've been trying to get the committee together for the past year. We had a meeting scheduled for, and this was part of my report tonight, we had a meeting of the Traffic Impact Committee scheduled for Monday, March 16th, which was canceled due to the COVID-19 situation. We were going to start working on revisions to our Traffic Impact Fee Regulations under Act 209, and also to discuss traffic concerns with one of our newer developments. So as soon as I can coordinate a virtual meeting of that group along with Andy Heinrich, our traffic consultant, we're gonna try and have another meeting. Off the top of my head, Kyle, you're still on the committee, Chris Salo, Nancy Frame, and there's, I think, three other people, Rich Bates, and the other names escaped me. Linda McNeil, I believe, was interested in that, joining that committee.
And so there's no need, there's no need to put this to, to the task force then at this point?
No.
Okay.
I would say though, Bruce, if it continues to be a difficulty with the members, and we might have to shift it that way if we can't get members to turn up to some meetings, and it's nothing against the members at all, it was just, you know, scheduling conflicts and, you know, obviously if it comes to that. I will tell you-
I'm just trying to keep it moving forward.
Absolutely. And I will tell you, the last meeting, the last Traffic Impact Meeting that I remember attending did have, and I'm sure we could probably muster up minutes of the meeting, but that did have a good discussion in that meeting regarding the bypass and, trying to remember that far back, I remember there was discussions about a meandering, a meandering bypass at the time, and that, you know, that was pretty much as far as gotten with it in that discussion. And Scott says it was 2014. I thought it was a little later, but nonetheless, it was quite a while ago. Now, also to answer your question on where are the township supervisors with the stance of a bypass, you know, this has been a slippery slope since I became a supervisor, and I can tell you, you know, obviously, the state has never had the money to put a bypass in. It's always been talked about. I think it's, it's a good thing. However, I also understand that sometimes it's not gonna be in the most convenient of places, and that doesn't work out sometimes too. But to answer your question, where's my stance? I think it's a great idea. It's just a matter of where, how, and when.
Thank you. I think it's an important planning tool, and I know that there's lots of different options, but you will be hearing from an applicant tonight who may be able to help us with this particular thing. It might have to be adjusted accordingly to not impact certain properties that want to be not involved in it. So I just wanna have, I think, to keep moving forward, we just have to keep, keep it on the agenda and talk about how it's moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kyle. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. Luke, anybody else for non-agenda?
There is a gentleman, first name Ed, no last name provided, who asked about providing comment. I think he's having audio difficulties, so I've directed him to either type his comment in the chat messages here, or to send a message to the supervisor's shared email, which is
Is that his question? Popped up on the screen?
Did it?
A message just popped up from Ed, and it said, "The Supervisor Winters," it's in the upper right-hand corner.
Would you like me to read the question aloud? Again, my preference here is that we know who the commenters are, but the question is, "Is Supervisor Winters living in township?" Ed Hurling. Well, that's directed to you, Supervisor Winters.
The question was, "Do I live in, do I reside in a township?"
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. I'd ask anybody else who has any other questions to either send me a message to unmute your connection, or again, type in a quick question here and I'll read it aloud. Again, the point on the agenda we're at is questions for non-agenda items, so if you, if you're here because you're interested in something that appears later, this is not the time to speak up.
Okay, so Luke, the next question that I see on my screen is that Hud Volts was trying to get in, was he in?
What actually appears on your agenda? I have not promoted him to a speaker yet. I don't-
Okay.
If you won't mind, if he had something in addition to the fact that he's already got like three agenda items on tonight, I will be promoting him shortly. But I don't think he intends to speak on this section of the agenda. I have promoted him as a speaker, however, we don't have an audio connection with him just yet.
All right, well, we can revert back to him if he has something for non-agenda when we get to agenda items, I guess, if he was trying for that. If not, we'll press on. So we'll press on to the minutes, oh, I'm sorry, we're gonna, we were gonna turn it over to Bruce Rawlings for the Township and Traffic Resilience. Was that, was that his time on that?
What he discussed was what he was on the agenda to discuss. Yeah. Now I've got Hud. Hud, did you wanna speak on Agenda Item 2, or are you just trying to get a live connection for your later agenda items?
I can speak to Agenda Item 2. Hold on a second, let me get to that. Is that the current bid rejection?
No, Agenda Item 2 is for non-agenda items.
Oh, I'm sorry. I see. Two, I got it.
Okay, so Hud, you don't have any non-agenda questions then?
I do, I think it's safe to move on.
Okay, perfect. Let's move on to the minute meetings of the Board of Supervisors, May 21st, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Supervisors' May 21st meeting minutes.
And I will second. All in favor? Okay, now I'll turn it over for the Treasurers' Report.
All right. I have checked on the screen, the account balances in the various accounts in the township. Would you like to read them in the record, or you wanna keep moving?
No, I'm okay. I would like to go through some of the finances real quick with Supervisor Winters, if that's all right.
Well, sure. I'll let you do your review and motion to approve, if you're so inclined, but I'm going to not read aloud the account balances to keep the meeting moving.
Okay, let's take a minute, Supervisor Winters, to make sure that finances are
Can you get my sweater out of my car? My sweater out of my car.
Kyle, are you good?
Yep, I'm good.
I'll make a motion to disperse the funds as presented.
And I will second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Scott for the Township Managers' Report now.
Scott, pardon the interruption, you are muted.
Clicked the wrong button, sorry. I'm pleased to report that the intersection pavement, paving at Ballinger Road, Horseshoe Pike, and Glory Maple Lane in the Mapleview Development was completed on Wednesday, June the 17th by Alan Myers. They still have permanent pavement marking needed for the lanes, for the turn lanes, the deceleration lanes, still to be completed. I'm waiting for additional information on a date when the traffic signals will begin operations. They'll initially begin operations in a temporary flashing condition, and then they'll transition to a permanent condition. Typically, that takes approximately two weeks to occur. Apple Cross, the Apple Cross Trail, that's located near the deceleration lane on the eastbound Horseshoe Pike leg, will be relocated at the request of the Homeowners Association. The contractor for that is scheduled to do that work on Wednesday. I already talked about the Traffic Impact Committee that was scheduled to meet on March the 16th, but that was canceled unfortunately, one of the impacts of COVID-19 situation. Our Traffic Impact Fee Ordinance was passed in November 2003, and we need to update that ordinance and the Capital Improvements Plan that was part of that project. One of the other things that we were going to do was discuss concerns about traffic in the Hopewell subdivision that was mentioned to me back in the fall of 2019. And I'm hoping that we can schedule a virtual meeting of the community in the near future. The Planning Committee for our Municipal Authority continues to work on our revisions-
332 is pretty, like, damn busy. They're gonna be, they're talking about a bypass, interestingly.
537, until it's-
I'm drunk, it's all right.
Enjoy your dinner, buddy.
We're hopeful to have a final draft prepared to submit to Pennsylvania Department of Environment Protection for review-
I got locked off once already.
Late in 2020.
I didn't go to these, though. I feel like out of-
One of the primary components of this revised planning document will include more stringent requirements for our sewage management program. The DEP has been very focused on these programs with other municipalities in their update of their respective sewage management plans. The authority wants the Board of Supervisors to be aware of that this program will require a complete inspection of the septic system of all residents who have on-lot systems in an initial inspection. That'll be one time, along with pumping, and then pumping of the tanks and a rudimentary inspection would occur at least every three years unless there's problems determined when the tanks are pumped. We'll have more education information on that. Joe Baldass from a municipal authority did write something up, which I'm gonna provide supervisors later, probably tomorrow. But we will educate the residents about that probably later this summer or early fall. But the focus of our 537 plan is on education and the maintenance of existing on-lot systems, and that's designed to avoid the need to expand the public sewer collection system to other parts of the township, because that would be very expensive. The Chester County Water Resources Authority is in the middle stages of their planning for maintenance and improvements to occur at the Beaver Creek Flood Control Dam located in the 400 block of East Reeseville Road, just west of the Zen Road intersection. Nate Klein, our Township Engineer, and I have had a meeting, I believe it was in February of this year, to discuss the process moving forward. We've also toured the dam, I believe it was last fall, to discuss what they were proposing to do with some improvements and maintenance items that are necessary, and also to meet the dam safety guidelines that are in place now. The dam was originally built in 1974, and there's no safety issues currently, but there are, there are concerns that if some maintenance, some significant maintenance is not done, especially to the outlet structure, that there may be further problems in the future. The Water Resources Authority is hoping that the COVID-19 situation will improve and allow them to do, or host a meeting, more of an open house, here on the evening of July 22nd, to publicly discuss the maintenance program, which is actually applicable to all their dam facilities, but this facility in particular is their focus currently. Authority Executive Director Jan Bowers asked that I provide the supervisors with a copy of the municipal notifications documents, which I will do, I'll put those in the supervisors' mail bins. It's primarily technical information, but there is some information in case people ask about that. The township has very little information currently, but we will refer people to the design engineer, Garnett Fleming, and also to the Chester County Water Resources Authority at the Government Services Center in West Chester. And as Mr. Rawlings said earlier, I was notified last week that the Danning County Area School District had purchased a 20-acre parcel from the McCausland Estate located on the north side of the 1100 block of Horseshoe Pike, east of Corner Catch Road. The parcel actually fronts both on Horseshoe Pike and Corner Catch Road. The district's director of facilities indicated that their traffic engineer will be doing survey work to present to PennDOT, where they'll discuss the roadway improvements that the department will be requiring for this project. However, the district has no plans currently to construct a facility there, at least within the next five to seven years. What they were proposing, what they are proposing, is a fifth, sixth-grade center to alleviate some of the long trips that students are experiencing going from, for example, West Bradford Township, over to the Shimonah Creek complex, which includes an elementary school, and also right now a sixth-grade center. Excuse me. So the traffic engineer, traffic planning and design, knew that we had some recent inquiries about some equipment that they had out at certain intersections. They were doing that for another development that's looking at other, in other areas, not just Brandywine Township, but they're required to do certain intersections in the vicinity of, I believe it's in Town and Township. But again, the school district has no plans at the present time for constructing a new fifth, sixth-grade center facility and some play fields, not sports fields, on that, on that 20-acre parcel. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. Could you, one thing, make it a little bit more clear? When you were talking about the, and I don't know exact number of septic systems in our township, but I would say it's, it's probably a quarter of our residents, is what I would guess. You had said that there would be, I'm trying to find your wording, but basically an inspection. Who would be doing the inspection? The townships, or would the, or would the-
The township would be doing that. We either contract with a firm to do that, we could contract with the municipal authority engineer to do that. We haven't gotten to that point yet. But I wanted to, the municipal authority, the Planning Committee, which Matt Van Lu and I are on, had talked about this, and we wanted to get that issue out before the board, before too long, to make sure that the board's comfortable with that, because it is going to be a change. And as I said, the whole idea is to make sure that people are maintaining their system, because when problems occur, it may be too late to save the drain field, which is the principal way that, that you get rid of the waste, other than the solids that settle in the septic tank. And it's much more than a quarter of the township that's, that has on-site septic disposal systems. I wanna say it's probably closer to 60%. I don't have the figures in front of me, but as I've said in previous meetings, we had a phenomenal response from folks to our survey back in 2019. It was actually over 50%, which is unheard of. Nobody does surveys, but we were, we were very fortunate to get the feedback that we did, and we just wanna keep people apprised of progress in this. It's a very complicated- and we just want to keep people apprised of progress in this. It's a very complicated project. It's more complicated now than the last time we did that, which was, I believe that we started in 1999. It took us three years to get DEP to approve of our last amendment to our Act 537 plan.
The, the only other information I wanted to add to that is that I know in some other townships, they've been doing this for a while now with their, with their daily inspect, with their yearly inspections or every three-year inspections. And I think that what some townships have done, and it might be something we can consider, is they were to have, submit to the township every three years that they did pump their, their septic. That was the first thing. And then the second thing is, the companies were giving a certify at the inspection saying it, it met the standards of today or, or didn't, and that came along with the, with the, the every three-year pumping. So it's just an idea that possibly could alleviate some of that burden on, on the expense.
Well, the, the pumping is going to be the responsibility of the property owner anyway. The initial, the initial inspection would also be their responsibility, but we want to control who does that. So that we make sure there'll be a checklist of the things that we're going to look at, such as the tank, that the tank is not failing, that the baffles in the tank are solid and have not rusted through, because that leads to solids that get out into the drain field. So again, the whole premise of the program is to try to make sure that people maintain their septic systems. Education can only go so far. So, and the reports, the county did start, restart their reporting system, but it's, they're not putting money into it. I don't know that anybody's managing it. So it's gonna fall back on the municipalities unless many other municipalities get together and request that the county reinstate their septic management reporting system. There, the county does the permitting of these folks, the municipalities don't. But in our proposed ordinance, we'll require that. And I believe DEP allows the municipalities under, I think it's Chapter 73 of the, of Title 25. I believe that's permissible as long as the township has the regulations that permit that.
Okay, thank.
Why do we, why do we, why do we care about this as far as forcing someone to tell us if they pumped out their septic or their baffles a little bit loose? I mean, they're gonna have an issue, they're gonna have an issue. And generally that before the, you know, isn't that like a more of a burden on the homeowner, but also more of a burden on the staff? I mean, that's just my, I mean, you sell a home, most people had their septic tested and 95% will fail. So to me, that just seems like a little overkill if it's not a mandate.
Well, actually, under Chapter 73, it is a mandate. It ultimately falls to the municipality, even though the Chester County Health Department issues permits for new systems, for repairs, the document malfunctions. Ultimately, the responsibility falls to the municipality. It's not gonna be the County Health Department that comes out and says that they have to, well, they'll issue the permit for it, but if, if the system's failing, the County Health Department is the enforcement arm. But ultimately, it's the township that has to make certain that these things are being maintained. Otherwise, if they aren't, and there's a cluster of malfunctions, DEP's not gonna come out and say, well, we'll provide a sewer system for these folks. It's gonna fall on the township. So the idea is to make sure that this doesn't happen because people will not like to, to hear what the cost of expanding the, the public sewer collection system could be to far-reaching areas of the township where public sewer is not currently available.
And we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna tell the homeowner that we get to tell them who they get to choose? I mean, that just seems, you know, a little.
They can choose whatever pumper they want. And we'll, we'll have a list of approved firms to do that. As far as the inspection, we haven't gotten to that yet, but we want to have control of that because it'll just be done initially. It's not gonna be done every time they pump their system, unless the system's determined to be malfunctioning.
Well, usually, if the toilet's back up, there's an issue and they have to check it. Is this gonna come back before the board for ultimate decision when it gets cleaned up?
Yes, it will. Currently, we're on Chapters Five and Six, I believe. To, we've gotten comments back from members of the committee, and I believe there are, I think there's one other chapter and then filling in some of the blanks when we know what page the appendices are on that are referred to earlier. So I'm hoping that we get that done sometime this fall.
But the board, the board can opt to say, we don't want to do this?
Jason, can I jump in for a second? Scott, can I jump in? This is Kristen.
Go right ahead.
So I've been experiencing this in a lot of municipalities when they update their 537 plan. Municipalities that have a lot of on-lot septic systems, DEP pushes them as part of their 537 plan approval to take on a more robust maintenance program and to be involved in the maintenance program. And that's statutorily under the Act 537 program, as well as the statute Scott was recommending. So I have a lot of examples of, you know, the ordinances that DEP wanted you to adopt, and then where there's been pushback by the municipalities, obviously because of, as Jason mentioned, it becomes a burden for the township, it becomes costly, it, you know, you have to hire staff and whatnot. So this, this is not something that's being decided tonight, Jason. And I do think that we should, I think it's a good point that Scott brought it to you because there are some policy decisions that the board's gonna have to be involved in. So I think it's a good jumping off point, and what I'll do is I'll share with the board some of the municipalities that have done it recently, where again, they did not adopt the standard model ordinance that DEP wanted, but revised it and put more, you know, took, took less onerous provisions out. I mean, there's still gonna have to be inspections, but in terms of the township's oversight of that and having to hire staff and that, there, there's some options that we have. So I think, obviously because you're not making a decision tonight, we have some time to think through these issues.
That's fine. And that's, and that's why I wanted to, you know, because I know, you know, West Bradywine, they do this. I had to perform with them over there, so, okay.
Turn it over to, to Luke for the Township Assistant Manager's report.
Thank you. I, I'm on the agenda a number of times this evening, and so I have no report. However, I do want to report that, while we don't typically have questions on individual staff and committee reports, through the question app, we received a question from Courtney. This was at the point that Scott was talking about the 322 intersection project. It, it, would, would you like me to read the question or do you want to stand by?
Go ahead and read the question.
Okay. Courtney asks, what is considered complete if there are other lanes to be completed?
The lanes are installed. What I said was, they needed to do the permanent pavement markings, which is, if you look, they have the lanes marked, but that's only a light duty, essentially it's a spray paint. They'll put thermoplastic down, which is a much stronger, longer-lasting pavement marking. There are arrows that are to be placed on the turning lanes. Both the left turn lanes, which are on both sides of the highway, eastbound and westbound, and on, both on Ballinger Road for the left turn. I think it's a left-through lane and then a dedicated right-turn lane. And then also on Glory Maple Drive, which is Mapleview Development. They have those lane markings to be installed, and that's prior to the traffic signals going into service. And if anybody wants a copy of the, of the lane diagrams, we can certainly, I can certainly email it to you or we could put it on our township website.
Okay, thank you. So do we have a building inspector report then?
We do. Scott, would you like me to read it or you want to read it?
If you have it up, go ahead because I've been looking for it and I can't find it.
Okay. So this is a report from Norang King, the Building and Codes Secretary. For the month of May 2020, a total of 12 building permits were issued, three zoning permits were issued, and the fees collected for building and zoning permits were $7,380. In the same period, the township completed 134 inspections. That is all.
Thank you. East Bradywine Police Department reporting.
Good evening. The police department continues to operate under a COVID-recommended operation from the county and the CDC. We do have one officer out right now on a positive testing. He just started his 14-day quarantine today. We recorded 1,904 incidents in the month of May. We conducted 178 investigations. There were 10 criminal arrests. We had no summary arrests, no warrant arrests or juvenile petitions. There were five traffic accidents we investigated, 23 traffic citations were issued, were five warnings issued, and the officers logged 8,810 miles of patrol. As the board's aware, as everyone's aware, police departments are under a lot of scrutiny right now, and the state has been coming out with recommendations that all of us should be looking into right now. And that's mainly in our policies, procedures and whatnot. But I, I just wanted to take a minute and assure the board that, you know, we again are a credited agency. Many of the recommendations are coming out in regards to the banning of chokeholds, looking at our use of force policies, the trainings we do. This department's been doing this for a number of years. We do yearly training on the cultural awareness, the implicit and explicit biases trainings. We do anti-bias trainings, and every year as part of our accreditation, I'm required to do a review and memorialize in writing a anti, anti-bias policing review of all of our arrests for the year. And that is all documented within our accreditation files. So I just wanted to reassure our residents that, you know, this police department is well-trained. We are way ahead of the curve of a lot of other agencies in handling these, you know, concerns over policy development, implementing policies, the trainings. We're, we're way ahead of the game. So if anyone has any questions, they can pick up a phone, they can call me, and I will be more than happy to discuss, you know, what we do in this department. You can look at any of our policies and whatnot. The one update we did make this past week, and this was something that came about from, I believe it was the Orlando Sheriff's Department, is there was a concern about a duty to intervene when another officer is witnessing use of force or excessive use of force. And we took it upon ourselves this week to update our policy and train new officers that they do have a duty to intervene if they think one of our officers is using excessive force. So we have updated that policy and it is implemented. And, you know, I encourage you to just, you know, if you have any questions, just get ahold of me. Though, and you have copies of our monthly investigations, the officer activity reports. That is all I have.
Thank you. And now I'll turn it over to East Bradywine Fire Company for their report. And I probably did not do it justice last month, so if you had anything great last month to dwell upon, please do.
Thanks, Kyle. For the month of May, we had 25 total incidents. Eleven of them were in East Bradywine Township, six were in West Bradywine Township, and a slew of others elsewhere. We used 196 gallons of East Bradywine fuel, 208 gallons of West Bradywine fuel. Significant was, we had a fire loss of $230,000. We had a major fire on Reeseville Road, just, yes, just near Bradywine Hospital in West Bradywine Township. 28 volunteers responded to it. If you look at our website, pretty decent pictures on there describing the conditions of the fire when we got there, and it was under control within five to 10 minutes. One thing, I don't know if Chief Cozy missed, but I, I just want to tell you, with a collaborative effort of the police department, East Bradywine Fire Company and Minkwes Ambulance Service, just a couple of weeks ago, we were able to successfully resuscitate a 61-year-old male contractor who had gone into cardiac arrest in the basement of a home in Alpraw. The police department responded very quickly, followed by the fire department, followed by the ambulance service, and before the gentleman left, the resident's pulses had been restored. And it was just how the system is supposed to work with the effort between the two. We are going to try and open the fire department for training and folks to come in, starting on next Wednesday. Belfour is coming in at a cost of $2,500 to the fire department and bio-clean all the trucks, the whole station, and hopefully make it a little easy for the men to come back. We're gonna have an outside training session next Wednesday. Since March 3rd, I don't know if you're aware, the fire station has been shut down for normal gatherings and only responding through emergency responses in hopes of not cross-contaminating any of the members. It's a huge undertaking to open the station back up, and like I said, I don't know how many times we're gonna have to have the station bio-clean, but the initial cleaning of the station from Belfour Incorporated is right around $2,500, which is some cost that we're gonna incur to get back open. We find it important, but we're gonna also monitor the situation. As everybody knows, the COVID instances are going up. If we find that to be the situation around our area, we're gonna have to close the station back down to being open because again, we only have a limited number of volunteers to respond, and we don't want to work losing them by taking out 12, 14 at a time. So we're working diligently. If anybody has any questions for us, I do want to reiterate to township residents, please, if you have an emergency, the number is 911. We're finding that people are calling the firehouse and leaving messages on the answering machine. Hey, I have a smoke alarm that is going off. I have a carbon monoxide alarm that's going off. I have a, a situation that needs some fire department attention. We are not there monitoring that phone while we get the voicemail at a given time. Still, if you need the fire department, 911, and there's not one emergency or concern, it doesn't warrant us coming out.
Thank you very much. Did I hear you correctly saying that there was a second individual? Now, there was an individual year, last year, that had the heart attack. This is the second one or is this the same one?
I was wondering.
Earily, this is a second one with the exact same situation, the exact same outcome in the basement of the residence, with a coworker who watched it happen who dialed 911. It could not be any more the same, but a year later.
Unbelievable.
Yeah. I think the guy was a contractor out of the Philadelphia region, but I'm not positive. But it, it, it was, like I said, a collaborative effort between all three agencies. And another, if it were another time, we would be recognizing the officers and the crew in the meeting. But again, this is what, you know, how we're dealing with it.
Yeah, I remember, I remember meeting the one gentleman at your, at your, your, your. Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you very much for the report. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, old business. I'm gonna turn it back over to Luke now for Bonsville Mill Park, Phases One and. Okay, old business. I'm going to turn it back over to Luke now for Bonsville Mill Park Phases 1 and 2 bid award.
Yes, when last we had this as a new business item, it was last month and we were extending the deadline for bids to arrive because of some bridge load testing and some sample pits. We did tests of the soils there. And so we did a alteration of the bid specs while it was still out. In the time since the last meeting, the, those bids have closed. And the results are frankly disappointing. We received only two bids and both are well over the budget for the project. So before you this evening is a recommendation from Nate Klein, township engineer, that you exercise the township's right to decline both bids that we received. Panoni and the Bonso Mill Committee are already hard at work at producing a revised bid package that moves some of the, some of the components of the park that were as mandatory or part of the core bid to options that we could accept or decline in the hope of getting that base bid down. So at this time, I respectfully ask the board to make a motion to reject both bids received for this project. And I'm also available for any questions you might have.
Supervisor Winters?
I do not have a question at this time for that.
Can you go ahead and give us a rejection of bids?
I'll make a motion to reject the two bids that came in from Eagle Construction of Dangtown. And I don't know who the other one.
Mohawk. Mohawk Construction.
Mohawk Construction?
Correct.
Okay. I'm making a motion to reject the two bids for the Bonso Mill Phase 1 and 2 project.
All second, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, so now I believe we have a presenter, Mr. Boxaloff, who will give us a proposal to prepare a Pennsylvania Historic Resource Survey Form for the Bonsville Mill complex.
Good evening. I visited with you last month to make a presentation on this and I'll give a brief summary of that for everybody's understanding. We had submitted an application to the PHMC for listing Bonsville Mill on the National Register as part of a milling district. That application was into the PHMC for four and a half years. And despite prompting from me, I got very little attention until recently. In the beginning of this year, we had a site visit with the State Historic Preservation Office, Officer, the PHMC and the county's Heritage Preservation Coordinator. And we reviewed the application and the consensus was that there's not enough historic fabric in the mill itself for it to stand on its own, but that we should look at the community of Bonsville. In other words, not just the mill, but the workers' housing across the street, the post office, general store building, the schoolhouse, the mill owner's house, and look at the Bonsville community as a potential for listing on the National Register. So we had the attention of the PHMC and the state Historic Preservation Officer now, which is a nice change of events. To do the revised application, I had Bob Wise, who is the professional consultant for historical issues to the township, provide a proposal to do the additional research and the revised, the additional research necessary for the application and revise the application for submission to the PHMC. Now, the whole reason we're doing this is to get the designation of being determined eligible for listing on the National Register. That's a DOE. And the benefit of that is that it opens up Keystone Grants from the state. And those Keystone Grants can be used towards the building rehabilitation work. There's very little funding out there. The committee in the township has been very good about finding grants and funding for all aspects of the park, but the one thing that we have a hard time finding is support for the historic rehabilitation work. So the cost of this additional work is $5,546. And I had asked if we could possibly find money to do that, given that with the COVID protocol, there's been a number of activities across the township that have been canceled. It was past spring. And it was tabled for consideration at tonight's meeting. Now, having said all of that, I did visit with the Bonsville Mill Park Committee and as well as the Historical Commission, who has an interest in this as well. And we determined that we could find the money within our existing budgets to cover this. So I presented tonight just to to close the issue here and make you aware that we're able to fund this with 2020 money that's already been budgeted to these two bodies in the township.
All right, so the one thing that I would like to address here is the last time we talked about this, I know Supervisor Hader had some insight to this. Unfortunately, he's not here today. However, I know he had some thoughts on this. Supervisor Winters, do you have anything to add right now?
My position, my position has not changed from previous. I am in support of it because I know that with the success rate so far with them getting grants and the work being done there, I think that it will be advantageous for that investment to open up, you know, additional funding.
And Luke, maybe you can talk about how we were discussing different financial means and where this would come from in budget?
I think I can give some insight, if you're willing to let me speak to it, Luke.
Okay. Yeah, the chair recognizes the speaker as just a point holder, but I, to the extent that we have, I defer my comment to you.
Okay. Ken made mention of the evaluation that is being done to shift money from the Recreation Fund to the General Fund. And that would be to compensate the General Fund for money previously spent on recreation projects that could have come from that Recreation Fund in the past. And as part of that evaluation, he suggested that perhaps we could find money there. And I believe that may be the discussion that you were looking to remember from last month as far as Ken's input. I think it's moot based on my conversations with the Bonsville Mill Park Committee and the Historical Commission in that we've decided that we can reallocate money that has not been spent on anticipated expenses for those bodies of the township towards this.
Okay, and Kristen, I believe you're unmuted right now. Is there anything you have to add on this?
Yeah, I mean, I think that Jason's point was right on that, you know, there is going to be grant money available that will help with future improvements to Bonsville Mill property. But this is one of the things that's important. They look at this as a positive criteria to be awarding to grants. So I think it's probably money well spent. And looking at an agenda item that the board will be dealing with in the future is a possible transfer of money that could have come from the open space funds for, you know, from developers that could go reimburse the General Funds for maintenance and things and operations of the park. So I think you'll, I think you'll find some revenue sources coming back in. And it seems like a very insignificant amount.
Okay, anything else that you had to add on that, Mr. Boxaloff?
No.
Okay. Then I'll turn it over to Jason.
Are you okay with the call?
Go ahead and make your motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion to, for the township to support Bonsville Mill's Historic Resource Survey Form for the complex or Beaver Mill in the amount of $5,546.
I'll second, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to keep on the same Bonsville Mill, but we're going to turn it over to Hudvolds for phases awarded for 3 and 4 and the permanent engineering costs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I get into that, I'll further augment what Mr. Revan said concerning the bids. I'm glad you rejected those bids. The numbers we used for those line items were 2019 pre-COVID numbers and they were based upon what the prices were at the time. And frankly, it was a much better market back then. We expected more contractors to bid. We didn't get that. We threw out a turnkey type of budget that we'd hoped we'd get a contractor to do. 90% of that, maybe 100%, you never know. But having been on the board for 24 years and in your seats, I can tell you that I'd say half of the bids we got were over the top and we rejected them. And then we would come back and rebid them. And that's exactly what we chose to do this morning. We met with Nate Klein, David Culb, Sandy Moser is there. Jim would have been there, but he had a health issue. However, I can tell you the foreman over there, Rocky Stone, agreed to step up and do a lot of the labor that's permissible under the law to help get some of these numbers down. And we're going to pull out all the things necessary to bring this in within budget. So I hope you would support us in the rebidding process. We're going to come back on probably late September or October. We heard from several contractors that this is great winter work because there's a volume backup right now caused by COVID. Everyone is scrambling to get work done that they could have gotten done in the first quarter or part of the second quarter. So the numbers we got were basically skyrocketed because everybody's busy and nobody wants to break their existing contracts. So the plan is to rebid, do what's necessary to bring it in on budget and get it done early next year. It's a shame we can't do it this year, but that's the way things are. So just a brief update on that. On Phases 3 and 4, I was before you three months ago with the great news that the county was not requiring a match. And if you recall, last year on our larger bid, which is the subject of just the rejection you just passed, the number that was given was a 10% match required by the township. And I mean, thank you for submitting that and approving it. So this year, when they said no match required, I couldn't have been happier. However, I learned when the grant was awarded that the county would not submit for permitting and engineering. They would not reimburse us, I'm sorry. So there went $10,106 off of our grant. I talked to our state representative, Mr. Andrew Gilchrist from DCNR. And he said, well, the state would match 50%, therefore they would cover engineering and permitting. But they won't cover anything less than a 50% match. So if we were $10,000 light from the county, then we would be $10,100 light from the state. And the total budget for Phases 3 and 4 is $233,000, or $234,000 approximately. So my pitch to the board tonight is last year, this engineering and permitting exclusion was the same. It was covered by our match, however. And this year, the $47,000 that came from the developer fund. And this year, without the county kicking in that money, we would be $10,000 light. And $20,000 if the state did not match that number. So we're asking that the board pledge, guarantee or come up with the money from the developer fund in the amount of $10,106 to support our further application with DCNR, which is pending. Mr. Gilchrist is holding open the application to see if the board will support the letter that I drafted and sent over. That's all it requires is the board's review and approval that if necessary, these funds can be spent. Will they be spent? Yeah, probably. I mean, I can't say they won't. But that number for a parking lot and new soils and plants is really an excellent number. Again, we expect a lot of volunteer work and donations to come in to augment that effort. So I would ask you to support the position that the township will guarantee an additional $10,106, which is still less than 5% of the total contract of $234,000.
Supervisor Winters, do you have anything on that?
Yeah, and can you just explain, not the number that have that, but as far as what the actual, just kind of briefly, what the 3 and 4 phases is? How the first 1 and 2 bids are going to affect that, if it will affect that at all?
Okay, Phases 1 and 2 are the concrete and substructure removal and the planting or installation of amended soils. All the heavy lifting is in Phases 1 and 2 in essence. And getting out the concrete and all of what is under that, including any contaminated soils, is where the major expense is. Once those items are through, however, supervisor winters is we all have to put in plants, which is Phase 3. We're hoping for a lot of donations there. Phase 4 is the actual parking lot construction. 60 or so parking lots at the southern end of the Horticultural Garden. So there's really no impact between 1 and 2, I'm sorry, Phases 1 and 2, 3 and 4, except the impact would be if the township doesn't step up like it did last year and guarantee some money if necessary to be spent. If it doesn't do that, instead of us getting $210,000 or $234,000, we're going to get $214,000 because the county won't give us 10 and the state is only going to match us what the county gives us. So we're going to be $20,000 light, not just 10. That answer the question?
Yes.
Kind of.
No, it did. I'm just wondering if, because parking's become such an issue, I've seen it on Nextdoor Neighbor as well as from, you know, being a supervisor. Is it worth looking at maybe doing the parking lot first? You know, or you're probably using concrete rubble for the stone?
We are. We're going to recycle as much as we can there. We're going to use the soils or substructure. We're going to crush the concrete, use it for the base. But with any luck, that concrete, or at least a partial parking lot will be in place at the end of next year. It's something we can get to fairly quickly by knocking down the scrub trees and putting in similar to what we have right there now. Just cleared land, smoothed out, but no real parking lot with, you know, pumper stops or anything yet. But I am going to address the parking situation in the next phase of my presentation here, number D. 8D.
And is it something for the, for the additional pledge from the township, from the board, is it something that has to be? When does that need to be answered by? I mean, when?
Okay, so we submitted our application for the DCNR grant April 12th or 15th. It was the 12th and we had just gotten our award from the county a couple of days earlier. So it was hard to mesh the $10,000 we didn't get from the county with what we asked for from the state. So I actually asked for more money from the state. That's how I got the answer that we can't, we can only match 50%. So we have to submit this as soon as possible. They'll make their award. I've been told around the election time. Last year, we got it very late in the game. But he's holding our application right now to see if the township will step up and help support this.
It's important that they process the application as soon as possible. It's to our benefit to facilitate them.
Okay. I mean, my thought personally, I'm actually okay with it, with pledging that because... I mean, my thought personally, I'm actually okay with it, with pledging that because I do think that's important. And we do have the, I think we have the wiggle room to be able to figure that out by election time. I think that was what Ken was talking about last time, too. He wanted the Bonneville Mill to sharpen their pens when it comes to budget for this, for the following year, to see if they can help us out. We did the same thing for the fire company. I think we should be doing the same thing for them.
And really, do you see any financial burden in the budget for this?
Well, I don't want to turn this into, I have a tendency to get lost in the weeds. I'm kind of nerdy on this. But what the board adopts is a line item budget. And that line item budget has a separate document that's beside it that is a breakdown of the anticipated projects for any given line item. So, you know, there's a great deal of flexibility within those line items to make room for the expenditures. As it relates to our financial situation, we won't have an idea of how the unemployment figures and people's loss of work due to the pandemic will impact our bottom line until we start getting returns for the second quarter on people's earned income taxes. I am not even slightly worried about the township's liquidity, but we may be getting in ourselves into the beginning of a cyclical problem where revenues are more than expenditures. So that's, as a race, like on a project level, I don't have any problem with this.
Yeah, just to jump in there, I think we were expecting the $10,000 to come from the developer fund, not from the line item budget, general budget.
Yeah, I was just going to say that. Yep.
That's what I was assuming we had talked about, so.
Yeah. Right. And since that is, that particular fund is money that comes from one-time contributions and it goes out for one-time contributions, it will not make a cyclical problem worse.
Correct.
Which is a roundabout way I was getting there.
Okay, Jason.
I'll make a motion to pledge the needed funds for the phases three and four grant application for Bonneville Mill committee.
And I'll add to that $10,106. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Hud, again.
All right, lastly, you should have in front of you two letters that have been drafted by me, addressed to owners and tenants of the Bonneville Mill properties, the old houses that, tenant houses that used to serve as residences for the workers. And those eight units now currently utilize the parking across the street, which is township property and part of the Bonneville Mill park. We've been working on this for quite some time, and I think I've come to the realization that less is better in terms of trying to control anything over there. I think everyone, including township residents, needs to understand the situation, but certainly the owners and tenants of those properties more so than anyone. So what I've done is draft two letters that I would like the township to review. I would like them to be sent out as soon as possible because we are in the prime season. We are not in any crisis mode yet. And in fact, I met with both the chief and Matt Van Louw about 10 days ago on site. And the chief came up with an idea that I ran by Nate Klein and his associate this morning. We were over there doing the bid specs review. And the chief and Matt agreed that there might be an opportunity there for a third row of vehicles if we slant appropriately the parking. So imagine the previous diagram, just shifting some of the parking farther towards the flagpole or the memorial and allowing for a third row angled in from the road. The only concern there being, you know, backing up, is there enough room there to back up into a shoulder rather than on the road surface? That's what's being worked on now. But in any event, I think it's important that notice go out from the township to those residents and owners that we are working on an interim solution and also give them hope and notice that we are going to proceed with additional parking, substantial parking down, down the street, across that bridge, where hopefully, eventually, a lot of people will park. And certainly for any events we're having, we would expect everybody to park down there. That will continue to allow the residents to use that parking lot. It's a license or a permit situation. It can be revoked if it's abused. We got away from a permit type of thing other than maybe paint the house's number on a bumper stop saying this spot is guaranteed or left for this person. And of course, 90% of the time, all those spots are not going to be used. My wife suggested that we get everybody's email to let them know specifically if a special event is coming up so that they can make sure they only have one vehicle present. Not a bad idea. But otherwise, give them notice the usual way, you know, email, mile marker, you know, public notice online, or I don't know whether you want to go direct mail or not. I wouldn't. But in any event, these letters have been run by, down the flagpole a couple of times on our end. We're hoping that you look at them and say, this is probably the best way to give everyone notice. We've talked to several owners. They think it's a good idea. Some of their tenants, you know, are a bit more difficult than others. But we're encouraging owners also, in addition to giving their tenants notice, possibly put something in their lease, a paragraph or rules and regulations or something that makes it specific that they know, you know, parking is at the discretion of the township, really, and that it can be revoked. But in any event, we're trying to get organized. So that's what these letters are about.
I think for the letters, and maybe you've already done this, I don't think I heard you say this, but I think we should have Kristen go through these letters and make sure we're covering all bases on that. And then I don't, I don't think that, you know, I don't have a problem with doing the letter. I just think it has to be reviewed first by legal.
Good point. I neglected to send them over to her, just like I accidentally muted her tonight.
I thought them, you guys.
May I call?
I thought they were appropriate. I think they're fine. I think that they have a nice enough soft touch, and I think it's informational and you have no legal obligation to let them do that. And I think it's a courtesy that you're extending. So I thought that the way that they were revised is appropriate.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and, I'm going to turn it over to Luke now for our procedure for filing pending board vacancy.
Yeah, I'm back here. Was, I don't know if I stroked out or something there. Was there authorization to send the letters? Is that where we were?
No, no, he's going to send them over to Kristen for her review.
Okay, didn't Kristen indicate that the review, that she had already reviewed them?
Yeah, Kyle, I'm fine with them.
Okay, I can't hear Kristen. What?
Okay. Hud, can you hear Kristen?
I can, yes.
All right, Kristen's fine?
Yes.
Okay.
She did get the letters. She saw them. She thought they were appropriate.
Okay, Luke. Oh, I'm sorry, Jason.
I just have concerns about the parking, as I said before. I think that it might create an issue, you know, in case that the owner wants to transfer the property, sell it. You know, it's only, I don't know how you're going to say that you can only park one vehicle there during X weekend or, you know, where are they going to park? I think that's a property issue. And I mean, to be frank, that was their parking for, since the mill was, you know, they were the homes for the mill. So I think that they do have a right to park there. And I think that we needed to really work with them a little bit more to, I had thought that they were going to come into a meeting or at least acknowledge the language. I mean, if the owners are okay with it, then that's fine. But I just want to make sure that they're okay with it first.
We did, Jason, this is Jim Buxala. We did survey a couple of the owners and they welcomed the letter. My personal perspective is, these are fairly softly worded letters. And the importance of these letters is that it's an official communication to them emphasizing the need to use that space efficiently. Because part of the problems we have with the lot right now is that it's not being used efficiently. So it's just a form of communication to let them know what the issue is, that it is township property, we're letting them park there. There's no discussion whatsoever of enforcement. I think it's a fairly softly worded letter. I don't know if you've taken the time to read them yourself or not.
No, I did. I read it. And I think that, you know, I think that they're going to argue or could argue that adverse possession and that they have the right. And, you know, I think that's something that needs to be addressed. I mean, prior to, it starts out with, you know, only on the weekends. Then, like I said, it's very hard. It's very vague and it's very soft, but it also doesn't really explain how it would be enforced, you know, what the ratifications are. What about in the winter, you know, who's going to be maintaining it? You know, the township has, I believe the township has not been maintaining the parking lot?
I don't know. I don't know.
I just think this, we need, I would prefer to have the owners sign off on it ahead of time or just have a special meeting for them to understand it a little bit more. That's all. I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm saying it's just a, it's a situation that we need to just be, we need to cross our Ts and dot our Is before we, you know, just to verify some things.
I can understand your perspective.
So just to make clear, Jason, you would prefer we send letters to just the owners and invite their input?
I think, I would like to hear, I would like to have them, something that's almost like an agreement rather than a letter to them. I think that, I think that should be recorded for the road in case the property is transferred. You don't have the same issue again.
Yes, that's what we're trying to.
Yeah, there's issues with that, though, guys. This is township property. You can't sell off and license off township property without procurement issues. So I think, I think there's some policy discussions that have to be held if Jason is not comfortable with allowing them on a just sort of voluntary informal basis to park there.
I just, yeah, I mean, me personally, I, you know, I was in a situation, or still am in a situation, started seven years ago, that, you know, township gave an owner, or tried to give an owner an easement to use our property, and they did not have that. And I'm still in court. So I would rather just not have that burden put on anyone else. I think we should just look into it a little bit more.
All right, so we'll go ahead and table the letter for right now, I guess, just till we get a little bit more clarity on that.
And how do you feel about reconfiguring the parking lot, though, without dealing with the other issues, though? Is there any sense of what you want to do there?
I personally don't have any problem with it. Again, I would have to assume that both the fire department and the police department would have to be on board with it and have no problems with it. Other than that, I'm okay.
I think putting bumper stops down there would be helpful, and then we'll see what happens after that. Is that okay, Mr. Winters?
Ah, yes.
That's all right. Okay. All right, we'll proceed in that fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're going to, I'm going to turn over to Luke for the procedure for filing pending board vacancy.
Yeah, I'm not sure how it has quite come to me to be the bearer of this news because I suspect that some people don't know. So I'll start with the, I'm sorry to report that staff and the other members of the board are in receipt of a letter of resignation from Supervisor Kenneth Hader. I'll say before I dive into this that I greatly appreciated working with him over the last six months. I think he's done, provided wonderful feedback that's made substantive changes to our board financial reportings, and I'm very grateful. That said, the agenda item at this time is a recommendation from staff about proceeding on how to fill the vacancy. So including in your packet is a simple front page solicitation. I think what I'm suggesting here is that we use our social media contacts and the township website and the like to distribute that there is a vacancy on the board. This solicitation describes what the role of a supervisor is in the township. It describes the term of office that they would fill, which would be about a year and a half. It describes the compensation that's available to members of the board. And then also, and I think this is where I would, I would like the board to weigh in on, it describes a process. Specifically, it calls for individuals to complete the standard form we have for committee volunteers and also to submit a letter of interest, no longer than two pages.
No.
That material would be due the day before your July regular session. And then this solicitation anticipates that there would be interviews with candidates who are interested in filling the vacancy. Let me, let me phrase, let me phrase that. There is not yet a vacancy, there's a designation. We haven't created a vacancy. But interested in filling the pending vacancy on the board in a series of interviews. And so I guess my request this evening is permission from the board to distribute either this solicitation or something similar, depending on your preferences, for filling the pending vacancy, so that we can get a head start on finding out who's interested in serving.
I don't have a problem. I do know that back in March, when Supervisor Hader was thinking about resigning, we had had some interest, short term or long term, by both Jim Buxala and Bruce Rawlings. And I had, I had offered that out there to Supervisor Winters then. I don't know, Supervisor Winters, do you have any, anybody in mind that would be willing off the top of your head right now? Just out of curiosity?
Um, no, not at this time.
So are you okay with accepting the offer from staff for this idea here?
Well, I mean, I think, I don't think that we need to. I mean, we have the second class township code, section 407, will provide us guidelines on, you know, how to fill the vacancy. As far as people that are interested, I mean, they can, you know, we have it on our website, they could get information. But I think it still had to be, you know, something that's going to be just talked about at the party. I don't, you know, no one who runs for often goes through the interview process or anything else as formal as this, I don't think that's really necessary.
I would like to state, I disagree for the record. I think it's a fantastic opportunity to get, to get people's resumes pretty much online, and it's getting done in a similar fashion to, to a board meeting where the people would have a say in it. So I think it's a fantastic idea, and it's very similar to an actual election where it's not, you know, leaving it back up to the people who would have some comments to be made during the public meeting.
I mean, I can see, you know, your title to your opinion. I just don't see the value.
So you would prefer to do it how?
Well, I mean, first, I think we should follow the guidelines in the second class township code.
Well, I offered that out to you right now. I asked you if you had anybody in mind, and you didn't. So how would, how would, how would that change?
Well, I haven't really, I haven't really thought about it too much. So, I mean.
Did you think about it the last time, when he resigned, when he considered resigning in March?
Did I think about it? No, not really, because we had a little bit of time. I mean, I think, I think first, you know, we need to accept this resignation, then, then just start having discussions about it and just hash it out.
I think that's what we're doing right now. We're having the discussions.
Yeah, I don't think, let me just jump in. 407 really just tells you timeframe. It tells you when the vacancy is actually effective, and then it tells you how many days the sitting board has to. board has to appoint, and if that doesn't happen within that timeframe, how many days the vacancy board has, and if it doesn't happen in that timeframe, what the next process is. But what Luke is proposing is a mechanism for the sitting board to vet potential appointees. So the process that Luke is suggesting is not something that's going to be covered in second-class code, because the second-class code is just identifying timeframes and who has the power to appoint. So Luke is trying to facilitate you two basically coming up with a way to vet potential candidates for you to ultimately appoint at a future public meeting.
Jason?
Yeah, I'm reading it right now, hold on one second. What is, what, as far as the, like, what are we looking at?
So what the second-class code, let me, 407 says that the resignation does not create the vacancy until the later of the following, one of the two. One, the date that the resignation is accepted by a majority of the board at a public meeting, or the effective date of the tendered resignation. In this case, Ken's effective date of attended resignation was yesterday, June, I'm sorry, June 16th. So the vacancy would not be created until the majority of the board accepts the resignation at a public meeting. If that doesn't happen, either tonight or at your July meeting, it will deem to be accepted 45 days after June 16th, which is July 31st. So if that, if the 45 days deemed acceptance kicks in, you two will have 30 days from July 31st to hold a meeting and select an appointee. If you can't come to an agreement, or fail to hold a meeting within 30 days of July 31st, then, let's just say it's August 31st, or August 30th, I'm sorry, then, 15 days after that, the vacancy board would have to come to a public meeting and make an appointment. And if that doesn't happen in that 15 days, then anybody can petition the Court of Common Please to have the court pick the appointee.
Okay.
So all Luke is suggesting is to come up with a way to give you and Ken, I'm sorry, to give you and Kyle, names of, you know, not just the two that were mentioned tonight, but there may be other people that are listening to this meeting, that are participating, that are on your committees, that, you know, the members of the public want to hear, and you, more importantly, want to hear what their credentials are and what they can add to the role of the supervisor. Doesn't obligate you to pick anybody, it just is a way to receive and understand there's people out there that are interested. It's different than when you're campaigning, because here, you know, it's an appointment, it's two people get to pick who the third person is until January of 2021, 22.
Well, then, I mean, so, so as far as, as far as the dates on here, I mean, I guess, I'm okay with the actual, you know, the format of it. As far as the specifics, though, it's July 16th, it's, you know, where's that going to place, and we're going to accept his resignation, for that to come into play?
Yeah, that's why, that's why 16th date doesn't have to be, it can be, if you guys want to, I mean, that would be your date that you would, I guess, accept and talk about the application, but if you're not willing to make any action on that date, you don't have to. You would have until, as I said, if it's deemed accepted, deemed accepted would be July 31st. So you'd have all the way up until July 31st, actually, 30 days from July 31st to do the appointment. So I wouldn't get hung up on that July 16th date.
No, I understand, I think that, I don't feel it's in the best interest to keep dragging it out at this point, but I'm okay with, I'm okay with this application process, but I would like to make a motion to accept Ken's resignation now, rather than push this off, and then maybe have the, have these applicants give us a little bit more than, you know, two weeks, you know, before, maybe have the application due beginning of July, or, you know, by the end of, something, by the end of June, maybe two weeks from now, or three weeks from now, and then that way it gives Colin and myself some time to review them before the meeting.
Yeah, I'm not going to accept his resignation until, until we've had some opportunity to sit down and talk about it. I think this is a perfect format, the, that Luke has suggested here, you said on record that you have nobody in mind, however, I've heard otherwise from the public. So I think that the public should be part of this as much as possible. So I've thrown out some opportunities for people that I think are fantastic candidates, you've told me you've given no thought to anyone, surprisingly, so I will not be accepting his resignation right now till we can figure this out. So I guess we'll go back to the, to the concept that Luke was suggesting, are you okay with that? Giving, giving the public an opportunity to get their resumes in, and we can discuss that.
I'm okay with his application, but I don't see the point of not accepting his resignation, that's 30 days from now, that's, you know, we can't, you know, we need a board of three. You know, we can't, I think it's in the best interest of the township to, and the residents to.
So are you okay with Mr. Buxala or Mr. Rawlings?
As far as what? I had a conversation with Luke about, I wanted to sit down with Jim.
I'm sorry to say that.
I said, I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to them. I said, I had a conversation already that I wanted to sit down with Jim.
Right, if you don't mind, may I, may I just jump in here? This is a very tricky situation for us as professionals here on staff. What we're talking about is the two remaining members of the board agreeing on a candidate who will be, for a year and a half, a substitute for an elected official, and moreover, our immediate supervisor. So when, when we talk about, you know, my involvement in this, I'm simply using my contacts in the professional management community to kind of describe how other municipalities have handled the vacancy. And so I'm trying to describe a procedure, and in general, these procedures have been public. I mean, this is a person who is serving in a capacity of an elected official, and I think that they should be held to the same scrutiny as someone running for office. So that's the, that's the edge of what's appropriate for me to weigh in on as a proper person here. So I just, I'd like to state that for the record, that's a kind of a sensitive area for us, as, as civil servants, talking about, you know, who essentially supervises our work product.
So is Mr. Buxala still on the line with us?
Yes, I am.
Jason, do you have any questions that you said you wanted to talk to, and maybe that was a great opportunity in a public meeting where we can get this out? We all know him, and if you have questions that would help you, let's, you know, I think now's a great time.
Well, the only question I have is what kind of impact it's going to have for the planning commission and the other committees that he's a member in, because he is an active volunteer in a lot of the commissions. That was one thing I wanted to discuss with him. And as far as the qualifications, other than being a volunteer, I wanted to see, you know, what his background was, and, and go from there.
And sorry, Jim, to put you on the spot, if you have answers, feel free, otherwise we can, we can do this during the submissions we were talking about for Wednesday, July 15th.
I'll speak a little bit. My professional background is as a geologist in environmental consulting. It's given me skills with regard to written communication, verbal communication, negotiation, project management, a lot of the skills that have come into play with regard to my heading up the various boards in the township, and frankly, outside the township and other things that I've done. Boy Scouts, worked for the school district and things like that. I'm a photographer as well, and you know, from dealing with me, Jason, I've been involved with the township for a long time. My focus is on the community, I do it because I want to make the place that we live a better place to live. I've been on the historical commission since 2005, I acted as its chairman for seven years, and I just stepped back into the vice chair position because of my greater involvement with the Chester County Historic Preservation Network, which is a network that, networks with all the municipal historical commissions and, and historical societies and Harbs across the county. I've been on the planning commission since 2015, and, and involved with the ordinance task force, and that's given me great insight as to how municipal governance works and how the process works. And I got involved with the Bonzal Mill Committee very early on, even participating in putting together the two master plan, I was the liaison from the historical commission for that. And eventually, as leadership was needed, I stepped into the chair position there as well. I have a strong commitment towards following through on the commitments that I make. And you asked a very valid question at the very front end of your inquiry, and that is, what does that mean with regard to my involvement in the other boards of the township? Well, clearly, I would need to step back from some of those, perhaps maintain involvement with the ordinance task force, which is not unusual to have a supervisor involved with that.
What about, like, the Bonzal Mill, would you, do you know which committees you would be stepping back from, or you don't, or is that something?
I, well, I guess some of that question goes to Kristen Camp, I don't know what kind of dual roles are possible for a supervisor, but I just think workload-wise, I would need to step back from a number of those. I have kept Hud Bolts very informed, communication-wise, with regard to what's been going on at the park the last couple of years, and Hud is very involved, and I feel confident that he could step into the chair position if he was willing. Planning commission, I think I'd have to step out of that. And a historical commission likely have to step out of that as well. Having said all that, I don't think it's, it's a given that I am formally going to throw my hat into the ring at this point. It's something that's come up, it's something that I think that I could do well for the township. I need to give it strong consideration before I indicate, I have a strong desire to fill that role for a year and a half.
Jim, thank you, and sorry to put you on the spot there, when you just, I knew you were here, and it brought up the opportunity to take that while it was on public record. And then again, I mean, if we, if we put that deadline to the 15th, I think it was the 15th of July, Luke, we could give Jim and others an opportunity to, to give us some, some feedback and insight on how they can help our township.
Okay, so to just, so, so we're clear, I've got a green light from the two of you to distribute this solicitation to apply for the vacancy?
So I think we were talking about, and I apologize, I have, I don't have your date, I thought it was the 15th you were talking about to submit that, and I don't have a problem, though, Jason, if you wanted to make the motion for the application process.
Well, I think I'd prefer to have the applications due, when is our July meeting?
That would be the day after, the 16th. So I had it due by four the day before.
I mean, I would probably prefer that maybe a week before, to review, have a chance to review them all ahead of the meeting. So, but I think, you know, that, again, I think, Kyle, you're, you know, you're getting this thing started, I think that we still, you know, I'm making, I'll make a motion to accept Ken's resignation dated today. It'll give us an opportunity to review the applicants for a week before the next meeting, and we can, we can decide, you know, which ones we want, maybe do a second, maybe a second meeting with or something, but if the need be, I think the first resignation, you didn't want to accept it because you wanted to give Ken enough time to see if he wanted to come back, but he had recommended that we did accept it, and I don't see why we'd change this time, I don't think he's coming back, I think we need to, you know, look towards the future and get things going. So, with that said, I will make a motion to accept his resignation.
All in favor?
You can't, you can't vote on it, you have a second.
Sorry, I will not second, all in favor? Okay. So now we'll go over to the approval of the FEMA forms for COVID-19 disaster, and I'll turn that over to Scott.
Thank you. The, Luke, I'm going to share my screen, because I have all three of these forms up, if it'll work. There we go. Okay, the three FEMA forms are on the screen, or should be on the screen. There, okay. In the upper left-hand corner, the, what they call the P E P P form, which is the, basically the electronic funds transfer form, or ACH form, basically lists our account numbers, our SAP vendor number with the state, our employer identification number, the federal EIN number, and the financial information, which is S and T Bank, provided that information on the form for the direct deposit. The DAP-1 form in the middle bottom of the screen is the form that designates or is authorized by the township, and I just realized that, well, this was, this was done earlier, so, but essentially what it does is it authorizes me as the township manager and deputy emergency management coordinator to be the designated agent for the township. And then in the upper right-hand corner is the DAP-2 form, which is, again, authorize, authorizing me on behalf of the township to apply for disaster funding through FEMA, which would come from the federal government through FEMA. So I'm asking the board to authorize me as the designated agent for the township, and the board would sign two of those three forms.
Kristen, do you have any comments on that?
No, no questions or comments.
Okay.
These are standard forms that are required, this, these are the initial forms that start the process. As I've explained previously, we have no idea when this is, this disaster declaration is actually going to be over. So for us to identify what the costs are thus far, we are doing that, Luke has a specific account for any COVID-19 funds, and the county recently asked that we provide them with an accounting for what we've spent so far, which are unbudgeted funds in response to COVID-19. But there'll be a slew of other forms that we have to file with FEMA through the county, but this puts our foot in the the county, but this puts our foot in the door.
And you're looking for on that tonight, then, Scott?
Yes, please.
Okay, Jason?
Uh, make a motion um for Scott to submit the Pennsylvania Electronic Payment Program enrollment forms um as well as the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency Public Assistance Grant Program Agreement and the designation of the agent resolution for D R dash forty-five zero six. Thanks, whoever just moved that up down.
The D R forty-five oh six is the designation of the uh disaster resolution at the state level.
Okay. So the motion was made.
Yeah, that's a sufficient enough motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, turn it back over to you again, Luke, for the appointment members of the two thousand and twenty-one Budget Committee.
Yeah, I I had a deliverable at last month, uh, which was to query members of the two thousand and nineteen uh Budget Committee and ask if they would be interested in returning uh in August of this year to start the budget process for two thousand and twenty-one. I have heard from all seven members of last year's committee, and I'm pleased to report that uh five are interested in re-upping and uh saddened to report that two are declining the opportunity. Um, I redacted the emails and uh phone numbers um for the purpose of the public display here. But the um five parties who are now veterans on the Budget Committee who are interested are Ken Ader, Carl Croft, Bob Long, Jim Throne, and Jeff Rolfe. Um, and I'm also pleased to say that uh even though we did not advertise this um to the public at large, we received one unsolicited application from a digital individual um whose uh application packet is in your um, whose uh application materials are in your packet as well. So um, I I will say, as it as it relates to this, the administrative functioning of the Budget Committee, um, um, my experience was that seven is a bit too many cooks in the kitchen for the sort of deep in the weeds work that this committee does. So um, I was uh sort of pleased to see five. That said, um, there's another C P A in our community who wants to contribute. I have no objection to adding them. So um, at your discretion, uh, I'd entertain a motion to appoint any combination of the individual names before you. And it looks like.
Look, we have to keep, we're gonna have to keep in mind here, and I wonder when, I want to invite any township president that wants to be part of this committee, but, you know, we're not going to be through COVID guidelines here to be able for all of us to sit in a boardroom uh to have these meetings. So, you know, I just think all of these people should understand that some of our budget meetings are probably going to be digital. You know, I mean, that's my guess, because as far as running the police department over here, I gotta be careful what meetings and who I'm sitting in rooms with. So I think that's a point we should make.
Okay, uh, Jason?
I'll make a motion to appoint Ken Ader, Carl Croft, Robert Long, James Throne, and Jeffrey Rolfe to the um uh Budget Committee for next year.
All right, and how about Stephen Pedler?
Yes, Stephen Pedler.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, moving on, we're gonna go to the um subdivision and zoning application for Plainbrook, E L U, Guthrie'sville Plank Farm Sketch Plan, and I believe we have Vic Kelly on the horn uh to enlighten us on this.
Uh, I am proceeding to unmute uh Mr. Kelly, and um I'm making an assumption, I've also unmuted uh Mr. Risbon, who who may wish to speak on this subject. And then uh for the record, since I have been polling members of the public, uh, at some point, we had forty-seven members in here, uh, we now have thirty-nine. Um, at the at the conclusion of of the discussion with the developer, I have uh five individuals who have comment on this agenda item.
Understood. Vic, you there?
I am, I I didn't, I was cut out for a little bit there. Is it, uh, I wanted to wait to be recognized.
No, please feel free to discuss.
All right, uh, good, thanks you guys for uh for having us. Um, we have, as you guys are probably aware, we've been working on this project for probably six, eight months, and we have kind of narrowed it down to two sketches. And the sketch before you on the screen now is one of the sketches that was presented to the planning commission at their last meeting. Uh, and we've probably met with the planning commission uh half a dozen times, maybe more, going over what are our options? And there's a number of driving forces here. The uh Respill Road Extension, as I'll call it, uh, it was part of the Loop Road that you guys were talking about earlier. We've been trying to take that into consideration, and we're really down to two potential plans. And this plan for you is uh, I think, from a practical standpoint and from a planning standpoint, makes the most sense with regard to looking at connecting Respill, or extending Respill out to three twenty-two. Um, the downside is that we have been also dealing with the uh East Brandywine Sewer Authority and the obligations that are required for uh onsite spray irrigation or spray or drip irrigation to handle the sewage flows. The Sewer Authority requires a hundred and fifty percent of the actual flows that are produced by the development. The site, as it's laid out on this particular sketch, is short of that because the road, the Respill Road Extension, is is totally unloaded. And from a developer's standpoint or from a development standpoint, that's very inefficient. Uh, and not having that that access uh is is a great expense, and uh you're not getting the benefit of that. So this is the more desirable plan, but it doesn't meet the sewer requirements. The other sketch, uh, which I don't know if Scott has or Luke has the opportunity to put up, is a sketch essentially the same number of units, but we start loading the road with those units, and we provide a hundred and fifty percent of the sewer that is needed. The downside is that we have townhouse units that will back out into that road, and it's more of a uh, it's more of a residential road than a connector or an extension of Respill Road. There it is. And you can see it's, from a development standpoint, it's more efficient. You have double-loaded townhouses run there. From a cost-effective point, it makes sense from a development point. From a long-term planning point, it it doesn't. It's very, it's circuitous, it it, it's not as efficient. So we've obviously met with the planning commission a number of times, and we've broken it down to these last essentially two options. And the planning commission is ob- obviously favorable to the prior sketch that we showed, but we need a reduction in sewer. We don't want to be penalized for providing the most efficient roadway for having a lack of sewer. So we're trying to balance where are we with? We still provide a hundred percent, actually about a hundred and twenty percent of the sewer that's needed, but we don't meet the the letter of the law that says that you need, or the letter of the code, I should say, that says that you need that hundred and fifty percent. So we're looking for relief in that regard. However, after the last meeting with the planning commission, and the planning commission, and Bruce can jump in here and and correct me or or tell me if I'm wrong, but the the favorable layout was clearly the first layout that Luke had shown, and I don't know, Luke, if you want to go back to that one. And the thought was that we we have had some discussions with the Sewer Authority, and we were on their agenda a little earlier, but we pushed it back to next Friday to discuss it with them, is possibly going to off-site sewer. There's a lot of capacity available, and actually some electric structure up at Hideaway Farms, and there are other more global benefits to possibly bringing that sewer online. Our thought is, or I guess our proposal at this point is, that if we buy a hundred percent of our capacity from Hideaway Farms and and rework the pump station on Bonsville Road, uh, and work with the Sewer Authority to get our sewer up there, and then dedicate this hundred and twenty percent to the Sewer Authority for future use, we're essentially providing two hundred and twenty percent of the sewer needed for our development. So we thought this might be the best of both worlds, and this is a little change from the planning commission because we got clear direction from them on what we wanted to do. But after being at it for so long, we really need to talk to the supervisors and get direction, and really maybe direction that will help us lead the Sewer Authority and everybody in the same, the same end goal. So not to elaborate too too much, but I wanted to give you as much background as I could, and then see, you know, just discuss it.
Okay. Vic, I'm gonna jump in for one second, so I can, I can preface this, because I just think the board needs to understand, and I'm sure they do, this is just a sketch. Plan, as Pinone's review letter, which was, I think, all the way back in October of twenty nineteen, makes it very clear that, you know, we don't know if this plan is viable with respect to all the ordinance requirements. You need a conditional use for the townhouse development, you need special exception for disturbances of of natural resources, and I think Steve Flops. You don't meet the riparian buffer setbacks. I don't know if that's a variance or what's required for that. So it, this is a very high-level discussion. I just want to make sure that the board members understand that and the audience members understand that. I, if you're asking them to make a decision right now as to whether they support sketch one versus sketch two, I think that's an appropriate question, but I think everybody needs to understand that this is very, very preliminary. And, you know, by saying they prefer sketch one, that by no means means that what is shown on sketch one meets the code.
I couldn't agree with you more, Kristen. I, thank you for pointing that out. I mean, we're, we're trying to get into the batter's box. We're, we're not even there yet, so.
I understand, Vic. And the other, I really, I don't mean to say that necessarily to you and Scott, because I know you understand the development world, but there are a lot of people on on the, in the meeting, and, you know, are raising issues and raising concerns and asking a lot of detailed questions that I just need, they need to understand this is just sketch, this is just a sketch. So if the board gives you a preference, then obviously you can run with that as far as designing a more fine-tuned engineered plan, evaluate exactly what ordinance criteria you don't meet, and then file the necessary applications, all of which require public hearings. So all of these people, if they own property in and around this particular site, they would be able to participate in those public hearings and and let their voice be heard at that point. I just don't want to get too far into the weeds. Um, this meeting's already been two hours long, I just don't want, again, it's the board's meeting, I'm not trying to assert it, but I think it's important to give the context in which the plan is being filed.
A- absolutely, we're at thirty thousand feet here.
Um, I I have one question I'd like to ask, just because I'm looking at the uh, and I can't remember, uh, I mean, obviously, we, this is the first time we're looking at your plan, but this particular plan, I know um um this has um a tap-in to, it looks like um um Apple Cross Development. Was that, was that the initial uh pulpit plan, uh, idea that?
Yeah, in fact, that, yeah, that they, there is an access easement there, and that is, I believe, uh, East Brandywine has the specific easement on that, as well as the open space, which is for the connector road. Whether that ends up being an emergency access, which which is fine with us, it's really kind of up to the land development process to figure out some of those, some of those particulars. We just show the ability to do those, those connections, but by no means is it necessary. Our access is is out to three twenty-two um, as shown essentially, ever, our potential development could go to the right. Right now, the open space that is behind Apple Cross, to the north of Apple Cross, only goes to the winner's property, which is not for sale and is not potentially the connection. Could there ultimately be a connection through McHugh in the future? We don't know that. This was just trying to um, to address and and kind of adhere to the long-term master plan as best we could, and still comply with all the other issues, all the other issues.
Jason, any questions from you?
No, I I I um, I really don't really know what this this sketch plan's on the agenda for. I mean, they don't have um, as far as the connection to the existing ninety-five townhomes, do you have an agreement with the Apple Cross H O A uh to tie into there? I believe the planning mission meeting, you said you had not, uh, that you were getting ready to start talking to them, so I don't know if you had started speaking with them.
Um, I can speak there, this is Scott Risbon. Uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, I met with uh multiple members of the H O A board today, approximately from one o'clock to two o'clock, to discuss. I showed them this particular plan. We we discussed a bunch of different options. Um, I am also a a member of the H O A, so I'm mindful of of what's going to be in the best um, the best interest of 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 the H O A. And we discussed a bunch of different options, maybe having like a, like a green area of a grasspaver area with removable bollards to allow that particular part of the the development to have two accesses. Again, say there's a, an accident or a tree falls uh at at the only entrance that they have, and there is somebody uh, you know, having a heart attack, or there's, or there's a fire ba- uh back into the development, there's no way to reach that person. This would give them an additional access.
How to get approved without anyone?
It's not, it's not approved at all. I mean, again, this is.
You know, the ninety-five townhomes, how do they get approved with one access? I'm just curious, that's why. I understand your co- I understand what you're saying, Scott, as far as you're, you're basically closing the gap to have a second access available for them for emergencies and whatnot.
Yeah, I think right now we're proposing the two entrance access roads that go to their townhouse development would potentially be emergency access only. The Respill Road Extension, if you will, the road to the north, would connect to the open space, which the township currently has the right and actually, I guess, the funding to put some sort of connection in there. So that was to provide a, it's kind of killing two birds with one stone. It provides access to our development, but it also provides access to the Apple Cross Development, a second access point to the Apple Cross Development.
Next to the gazebo, you're talking about the north, right in the middle there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the north is a corner there.
All right, um, you think this, Kristen, is a good time to get some of the, I'm I'm getting, I'm seeing these messages pop up here, um, and I think it's important that we obviously give the public a right to answer, uh, you know, ask questions. So Luke, I I'm seeing a lot, but on my end, perhaps you can uh, you probably have a pecking order on who's been first, if you could.
Right, well, we we have a um, a kind of a a unique problem here. Uh, we we have a lot of folks in the room who are using the um, ask a question feature of the app, and I've never seen that before. We only have a present for that. Let me, let me just say for the folks in the room that we we do this as like kind of a digital equivalent of a meeting where we're meeting physically. And what would typically happen where we're meeting physically at this point is we'd have a lectern, and people would take turns coming up, introducing themselves, saying where they live and their name for the record, and then sharing their, their thoughts or concerns about the proposed sketch plan. So the fact that we're getting questions directly through the app, I I don't precisely know how to handle it. What I ha- what I do have is a list of of, like I said, five people who are queued up, who I'm going to. I'm going to unmute one at a time and let them ask their question directly. So anybody who wants to add to that queue, please use the attendee chat feature on the left side to let me know you're in there. But, but first up is a couple of representatives of the HOA. I'm going to unmute Bonnie Nye and Joe DeFrank. Please stand by. They are still loading.
Okay.
A little clunky here. All right. Now Bonnie can speak and be heard.
Okay. I, I think, I did not, did Joe speak?
No, no. Joe is still connecting. So you just come by first.
Round back. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Joe DeFrank, Apple Cross Homeowners Association Board President. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Rysban for taking the time, as he mentioned, out of his schedule to go over the preliminary plans. It was quite helpful. I do appreciate it, Scott. Since this project is in early stages with limited information available, we have not been able to meet with our homeowners to discuss the impact to the Village Towns community, something that definitely needs to be done when a more defined plan is set. With that being said, it's imperative that the township understands a few things about our community. One, there are limited parking spaces available over there. The roads are tight and in the evening when everybody gets home, it gets pretty crowded over there. And I highly recommend that a few of you take a ride in the evenings. You'll see what I'm talking about. Our roads aren't dedicated. So maintenance, repairs, replacement of all our roads and the winter maintenance is all on the homeowners of the association. So we pay for that. Regarding the par lane, emergency lane easement, and that's the way I read it in the drawings early on, that it was an easement. And that to me is something similar to the grass run between Empire and Prizer, or maybe something as Scott mentioned, grass pavers, put some temporary bollards up or something in that line. That would be something that might be doable. I cannot speak for the homeowners of the Village Towns, but the temperature reading from a handful that I've heard over the last few days is that under no circumstances, anybody wanted access, open traffic access to either the north side or par lane. The homeowners of the Village Towns are presently struggling for help from Pulte regarding warranties, repairs, landscaping, broken promises, and things just haven't been followed through on. And to be honest with you, the news of this possible construction, this new development and the impact on that community has been quite devastating. I'm hoping that going forward, that our board can be part of this process under discussion with the developer and the township. And at this time, I'd ask Dr. Bonnie Nye, our Vice President, if she has any further comments.
Yeah, I think, you know, in regards to the roads, I think it comes down to sort of to you to put a road through is sort of making an assumption of the public use of a private road. And that's a sort of a, that seems to be a big leap. And, and I echo Joe's sentiments from at least the homeowners we've spoken to to date, the opportunity in this short period of time is that they're very concerned about taking for their children, the effect of extra traffic through there. We've asked people point blank, well, what about the option that you would be able to get the 322 more easily if you were going eastbound and not have to deal with the Guthrie'sville intersection, which is always, you know, taxing. But their thought was they are willing to deal with that over having more traffic through their community. So I, so, I mean, that's the sentiments we're hearing. But I absolutely echo Joe's thoughts that we really need to be able to get a better temperature read from more of the neighbors who live in that area and would be most impacted by these decisions. And I guess one of our questions to you as the board is how do we most effectively and efficiently get that, get those thoughts to you? You know, we're talking about over 90 homeowners and, and all may want to have a say in some way. Is there maybe if you could give some thought of how we could communicate those thoughts to you most efficiently as we get better reads on these things? So, you know, that's an open question and not necessarily to be answered at this moment, but if you would give that some thought. I think as we looked at these plans, one of the things that was, you know, concerning is this is the most dense development that I'm aware of in the township. The first time that neighbors have been so close together while we obviously have neighbors sharing property lines all over the township. These are much smaller lots than we typically have through the township. And so these neighbors will be very close and neighborhoods close. So, you know, we would love more thought given during the planning process to how the actual property lines would be managed, whether there could be berm in, close to roads, vegetative lines, fencing near roads. These are just not large lots. And so, you know, you have the difficulty of toddlers who are near roads. And again, just for visual barriers as well to create more of a sense of community and neighborhood between each neighborhood. So those were some of our thoughts. There is an indication on the, on the plans that we saw that there was, would be a request for a variance for the minimum distance between units of 75 feet. Looking at these, we're not sure how that applies, but we would ask that that be looked at closely as again, it's, it's pretty tight. We also had a concern for the new development, but it also impacts this development for fire access. I think as at least Kyle is probably remembers, I'm not sure, Jason would, but we have a problem in the current, in our current develop there in the Village Towns for access for fire. And this was only determined after it was built. So we would be concerned about access for fire equipment and that there'd be an early read by the East Brandywine Township Fire Marshal of this, of any proposed plan. So it could be amended and so that there would be safe access. Clearly, when you're putting stick-built homes so close together and tight, this fire is a huge concern safety-wise. And I think those were some of the major things we had at this point. Things that we would like to see, again, maybe at the planning commission level, but, you know, certainly consideration too.
Can I, can I speak to, to a couple of those items? Again, Scott Rysban?
Yeah.
Bonnie, after we had met, I talked to the partners and Vic Kelly, who obviously is our civil engineer. And the, the ability to put a fence in where we discussed is, is an absolute possibility. The ability to put berming up and/or plant material to buffer the existing homes is an absolute possibility because we have a tree, like whenever we remove trees, we have to replace trees. So there are, there are ordinances in place that will allow us to, to act on those, on those particular items.
And to kind of follow up on Scott's point, this is Vic Kelly. Just so we're apples to apples, the, the, the Pulte development is essentially the same density or lot sizes as we are. In fact, we, when we first started using the sketches, we used their footprints as the building. So they're very similar in nature and the density is, is well below what is permitted in the, the TND one district. I think we're, by zoning, we had 150 units, we're about 90 units or so. But again, as Kristen stated earlier, this is a sketch plan. We're trying to get the general direction. When we get into all the land development issues, we will go through, tighten everything up as far as, you know, what the density is, how does it comply? Does it meet fire code? All those issues are part of the land development process, which is a long process, part of the conditional use process. I mean, again, as Kristen stated earlier, there are a lot of hearings that will go forward as the project moves forward. We're trying to just right now get a general direction. Is everybody on the same page with how we're going to handle sewer and that sort of thing? So I totally appreciate all the comments and we will try to address all those as we move forward.
This is Joe again. I have a question. Are the lot sizes on the new development the same?
The, the lot widths, I think the townhouses were 24 feet wide in, in the Pulte side, the Apple Cross side, and they're the same on this side. Yes.
All right. The, the new development looks like the homes are further away from the rear back set property line. That's why I'm asking.
I believe, I, I don't remember offhand. I think there are 35-foot rear yards that were required and we complied with whatever the zoning code is for that.
Okay. Thank you.
So I think it's important to note and, and, you know, we could probably start a, start a dialogue with Apple Cross and the township. And obviously they're the, right now, the most impacted by, by this development. And I would think, you know, as an outsider looking in, I would tell you that, you know, the, the access road, you know, albeit emergency, I would feel would be a better suit for my opinion. I, I think it would put much of the residents of Apple Cross at ease, knowing that they're not going to have people just cutting in through the development haphazardly. So, so I, I think that it's important that Apple Cross, you know, has, has a say in this, but also to, to address some of the, the leading questions and possibly, you know, you know, direct those to, to the board in a whole. And we can, we could certainly pass them on and try and be a little bit more efficient in answering those questions. Right now, if you're asking the board, and obviously we have some more questions, but if you're asking the board on a sketch plan, you know, from, from one to two, I, I'm looking at a very, very small picture, unfortunately. Both my, my, my plan that I have in front of me as well as on the screen with this, with the way that we're handling things with COVID now is, is not doing it justice. And for that, I apologize. I think I would need to see a full set of plans in order to, to make heads or tails of what, what's going on here. But in the two plans that you've submitted, is there anything other than the, the sewer and road placement that, that's changed? Is there more units, less units, one versus the other? What are the, what are the bigger things?
No, they're both, they're both about 91 units and really it was just trying to comply with the sewer capacity. And like I said, the density permits up to 100, I believe it's 150. And, and sorry, we've been, you know, so disconnected here. I don't have all my notes from the past, but no, they're essentially the same density wise. And we did have some adjustments from the planning commission where we tried to get out of the riparian buffers as much as we could and we added trails. Some of those are not shown on this plan and have been massaging or gelling as we've been moving forward with them, but the layout is essentially the same.
Okay.
Kind of in the works. Sorry.
For, for the representatives of Apple Cross, both Bonnie and Joe, do you have any other questions? I know there are some other residents and, and obviously you guys being the board members are, are important to, to, you know, you're, you're the voices for them.
No, we appreciate the floor and a little bit of time to speak our piece. We just wanted to make sure that, that the supervisors understood what we're up against and our limitations in the community. So we appreciate the time and we'll let the floor open to the others.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much. And then what we'll do, Luke, we're, we're gonna, you know, obviously, a good amount of people. I'll remind everybody, we're gonna have to limit it to three minutes. Obviously, the association got a little bit more time and, and that was a, that was a group effort. But so, so let's go ahead and turn it over to the next question, Luke.
Okay. So at, at this time, I'm going to mute both Bonnie and Joe's microphones. I don't do so disrespectfully. We just get better audio quality if we have fewer.
We're good. Let others speak. We're good.
Okay. And, and next in the queue is Kalen Feliciano. I hope I didn't get your name wrong.
Not too bad. Good evening. My name is Kalen Feliciani. I am one of the residents on Locks Farm Lane and my home would back up into the new development. We've only been seeing this for the past few days as well. So our neighbors and I are just starting to speak. However, we do want to voice our concerns out front and we will continue to discuss this and be present at these meetings because there are a lot of concerns on our end about the impact to our neighborhood. First and foremost is the access roads and I'm really happy to hear that you guys are open to a, an emergency access only. I think that that is a resolution we might be able to agree on. We just don't want 90 more houses of cars driving through our neighborhood when we are at such a tight capacity as it is, especially given the truncated driveways, the narrower streets. It is a very hard neighborhood to navigate and to add in these additional homes. It just doesn't seem feasible or fair to our neighborhood. Definitely, we just ask you to consider the spacing in between the row of homes that backs up from Locks Farm into this new development. We all kind of were sold this idea that there would be a lot of open land and I understand that that was a developer conversation. However, it looks like in this plan, there is so much open space on the other side. Why can't we consider flipping it or allowing more space in between our homes so that we don't feel like we're on top of each other, that our community is still our community? My additional question with all of this is we still have stormwater and stormwater basins and drainage issues. And he's, the developer was talking about how the sewer, if they have to go over some, you know, exemptions with that, we would be very concerned about the impact of those things in our community when those items are not fixed in our community and you're going to add additional, you know, I don't even know the proper word to use, but just additional usage onto it and how that impacts our neighborhood, which is not yet even complete. So that's a very brief thing. I think the neighborhood as a whole will get together, submit some documentation to the board and to the township about what our concerns are. And we really just ask that you keep us in mind when you approve this plan and that we are homeowners in this community that care deeply about what our neighborhood looks like and the impact of this development.
Thank you, Kalen. I appreciate that. I will tell you subdivision and land development is a long process. And the, the one good thing with that is that I would assume that this would be the same situation and Kristen and Vic, you can speak to this probably better. You know, when, when these hearings do start, the, the public will be given an opportunity to get things in writing and have opportunity to, to meet with the developers. I'm assuming that would happen for this.
That's correct. Many, many different layers, zoning and subdivision.
So it's important, Kalen, that, that again, you know, the buck doesn't stop here. It's going to be a, a long process and obviously the meetings in the near future, hopefully will be back to, to, to a boardroom environment where people will have the opportunity to come in and, and the developers can show you their, their plans and, and, you know, it's just a little bit more of an open format.
Kyle, can I say something again quickly? This is Scott Rysban.
Absolutely.
We, we spoke with the board, I mean, I spoke with the board today, as I stated earlier, and we discussed maybe having something similar to like a, like a, a small townhome meeting with these folks as well to try to vet any problems upfront. So that's, that's an option that we're going to be able to do once we're allowed to kind of gather in larger groups.
Thank you. So, so thank you, Kalen. I appreciate it. Luke, I'll turn it over to the next.
Yeah. Next up in the queue is Ryan Emel. Your microphone is live.
Hi, this is actually Rachel Emel. I'm here with my husband, Ryan. We just logged in as one person. I just want to say thank you to everybody that already spoke. I think our HOA board members spoke wonderfully to the concerns that we're having and I can't emphasize. and I can't emphasize Caitlin's summary of our concerns enough. I thought she did a great job. You know, to the sentiments of, you know, we're still 30,000 feet in the air, and this is still far away. For us as homeowners, you know, it feels like you're literally backing up against my property line. So now my property value is in question. So please understand where we are coming from in Locks Farm, in an Applecross, where our passion is coming from with this. You know, we picked this location because it's beautiful and because it's private, and, you know, we do feel very strongly that, you know, this was just dropped in our laps, and we're just trying to understand it now. And we would just, you know, really appreciate and respect our input into this community. You know, I understand that these developments are going to come up, you know. We knew when we bought that it was a possibility, but please be mindful of property values. I mean, I don't know how good of a selling feature it would be if people go to check out their new home, and I'm waving to them from my deck. So it's just something that we would appreciate you considering and continuing to hear from us in Applecross.
Thank you very much. That was Rachel, correct?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Rachel. I appreciate that. And obviously, as I just said to Caitlin before, there's going to be a lot of meetings, and I know it's impeding and important to you guys right now, but rest assured, we will have tons of opportunity to address these questions. And I don't know if you heard, but one of the developers was just stating that they're going to try and do like a little town hall. So hopefully that will help put some of these questions out on the table sooner. We can address them sooner. Well, thank you again, Luke, for the third question.
I don't have any more people who want to be recognized vocally here. However, I have in the chat session, an individual who asked me to read her comment. I've indicated that the individual, that this is just tangentially related to the proposed sketch plan, but I would like to read her comment. This comes from Margaret Alvarez. "It has been a year since Pulte completed construction at the Village Towns. Transition work by Pulte is at standstill. Can the township get involved to make Pulte finish the transition items and issues before another development is approved?" You can read the question and answer from there. She also notes, "I'd just like to add that the Village Town has families with small children. Many of these issues are safety issues that Pulte has yet to address." So to the extent that this applicant is not Pulte, this is a separate developer, but I think the question speaks to the sort of agreements the township enters into with developers, so.
Yeah, so I guess I'll just start out by saying, I mean, it's kind of, it's similar to if one neighbor maybe didn't finish something on their house, should the other neighbor not be able to sell their house because their neighbor's house is incomplete? The township can intervene with two developers and vet them against each other to make one complete something before the other one can start something. If it did, we would be sued. But that being said, we do have, we do have things in place that will help us with escrow accounts with builders before they get their final escrow account payment, that that opportunity arises, that these issues can be addressed, and we deal with those all the time. I would say that Ms. Alvarez, if there was something that she wanted to, obviously, we deal, I'm assuming, and this is an Applecross resident, but I'm assuming if she wanted to get her question into the HOA, we will be addressing the HOA again, and these are things that can get addressed before an escrow payment provided, is released, provided it's in the realm of the payment plan. Kristen, do you have anything to add on that?
No, I think you answered that very well.
Can I speak again?
Absolutely.
I think tonight's meeting really, beside all the, Bruce Rawlings, Planning Commission. I know the applicant is anxious to know what the thoughts are of the supervisors of the 120% versus 150% of replacement value of sewer. And I think that's one of their main reasons here, and I know we're addressing a lot of issues that might be addressed in the future, but those issues might not even occur if we don't let them, give them some guidance tonight.
Yeah.
Talk on that.
Kristen, do you have, yeah, sure. Kristen, do you have any insight on the sewer?
No, I do want the board to hold off on that. I think I want to talk to you about some other things, that have an impact on this developer and some other developments. So I'd really like you to hold off on making a determination on that till we have a chance to speak.
Okay. So, there was one other question, or was that it, Luke?
I lost one potential person who was going to speak in person because she was applauding the statement made by apparently a neighbor. So I have no further individuals in the queue.
Okay. All right, there was one, and I'm assuming, did you see the two? One from Doug and one from Ed. Did you see those? I don't know if it was necessarily a question, but I think their feedback should be noted.
Yeah, Luke, is there a way that you can take the attendee chat and put them as parts of the minutes? Because there are, it looks like there's people that, you know, would have commented.
Yeah. I don't know. What I will do before I terminate the session is make sure that I get screenshots of the conversation. If nothing else, I'll just capture images of the conversation for the record. I'm pretty sure that that chat disappears. We'll be left with the video and the audio, but we'll lose the chat. So I will record that for posterity before the conclusion of the meeting.
Yeah, and obviously, these minutes are different. In this COVID environment, we're doing the best we can to hold these public meetings and to allow public participation. So I think to the extent you can just summarize, you can do screenshots and just summarize some of the comments that were made, so the board can look at those after the meeting and have them going forward.
So, what would help me, and I don't know, I'm not going to get this tonight, but if I can get a copy, a larger scale copy, unfortunately, you know, we're looking at eight-by-11 sheets of paper, and I can't, I'm just being honest. I can't see street names. I can't see residents. I can't see anything. Do you, Vic, do you have a larger copy at the township by chance? I believe that, Scott, we hadn't submitted hard copies, but again, this is kind of prior to the COVID breaking out. We'd be happy to deliver large, full-size drawings to the township at your request.
Yeah. This is Scott Rizman. I can drop them off at the Township Building. That's not a problem.
Yeah, I don't want you guys going out of your way to, you know, spend money making huge copies for everybody. I was just thinking if we could have a copy, I mean, just something that we could actually see. Again, what you're seeing on your screen right now is exactly what I'm seeing on a piece of paper right now, no different. And it's just tough to, you know, to make out, you know, the direction. So, sorry, Kyle. I do know that in the past, when we made sketch plan submissions, we followed township procedure and provided large-scale plans and whatever was needed. Okay. And we would be willing to do that again. Perfect. All right. And if I can, just to follow up on Kristen's questions, and I think like Bruce said, we've been before the planning commission for probably the last six, eight months, off and on, obviously, with what's going on. But we are at a point where we do need to kind of make a choice and make a direction. And, you know, Kristen, I don't know what your, what your plans are, but is there an intent to get back to us at the next supervisor's meeting? Or what would be our role here?
Yeah, Vic, I'll have the opportunity to have a conversation with the board, some other developments that have come up that I feel like I need to give them some advice on. But yeah, I think we can have a conversation and try to give them, to give you, I mean, obviously, they want to look at the plans, the full-size plans. They can take the time to review some of the planning commission's comments and concerns, ask, you know, they can always reach out to you individually. There's no problem with one of them calling you or calling Scott. But yeah, I would think if they're prepared, they can revisit this and give direction. It doesn't necessarily have to be at a public meeting. It can be through their consultants and staff.
Great, great. Thank you. Okay, so, I'm just, sorry, I'm reading some notes real quick. All right, so I'm just going to read this one out loud real quickly, and then Scott and Vic, you can, you can answer it. The question was, "How long has the project been in the works and when is the project scheduled to begin?" Obviously, that's, you know, an unanswerable question for when it's scheduled to begin. But how long do you anticipate it to take? And will there, is there a way for us to veto the project so that this doesn't happen? I'll answer that. Obviously, the voice of concern would come during the ESDO, which is the subdivision of land development, as well as the many meetings that will happen in before that, and supervisors ultimately will make a decision. So, are there any plans for not as many houses so that the privacy stays intact? So I guess I'll ask you the questions. One was, "How long has it been in the works?" Two, "Is there, is there plans for not as many houses so that the privacy stays intact?" And that was from a resident named Ed. I guess I can kind of address those. I'm going to say that we started this project a year, a year and a half ago, and it was a little more global. It looked at the school district, property across the street, and how some of the touring might be. It also took the comprehensive plan and the Guthrie'sville Village Plan into consideration with regard to trying to provide the Reeseville Extension and make that connection, since East Brandonewine Township already has the open space portion to the north side of Village Towns, I guess, which was Applecross 5. The density, it is in the TND. The Guthrie'sville Village Plan is for the density to be around Guthrie'sville and where the infrastructure is, where the public sewer is, where the roads are. This is part of the road system. So, like I said, this is not a maxed-out plan, and I, again, excuse me, I'm not upping all the numbers, but I believe it was somewhere, the density permitted by zoning is somewhere in the neighborhood of 150 units. And we're looking at about 90 or so. So we are not close to what the zoning allows. And we've been before the planning commission, and Bruce may correct me or jump in if you know, six or eight times or so, discussing, you know, all kinds of different options and the different layouts and that sort of thing. So the project's been a year, a year and a half. How long will it take? We're really at steps one. I mean, the sketch plan is a long process, and I suspect the conditional use would probably be a three to six month, and the land development would be a year, a year and a half. Perfect. Thank you very much. Vic and Scott, obviously, if we can get a larger copy, I think we'll be able to answer those questions for you at the next meeting, if that's okay. That'd be great. Okay, thank you very much. And then the last question that was asked from Doug was noted that he's going to join the live group as soon as possible. And, I'm sorry, go ahead. Somebody have something? Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move on then to ordinance a resolution for consideration, and I'm going to turn it over to Kristen and Luke for the Resolution 13 of 2020, international, the intermunicipal agreement between the County of Chester and participating municipalities to provide process and marketing services for recyclable material.
Kristen, I think if you don't mind, I'll start, and then we can rely on you for the terms. So by way of background, in the fall of last year, we solicited competitive bids on our curbside trash and recycling. That contract was different than the preceding contract. It separated the tipping fees from recycle. So now we pay the tonnage for processing recyclable materials when we take it to the materials recovery facility. Whereas under the old contract, the profit or loss of the materials collected at curbside were retained by the waste hauler. We made that change because in the five years before the current contract, the, there was a great deal of volatility in the post-consumer recycle market. So in other words, a ton of plastic is nowhere near as valuable as it was the last time we went to bid. So, so to start, we, as the Solid Waste Program, are responsible for finding a point to tip our recyclables. And there is a multi-municipal organization that was spearheaded by Chester County that municipalities who are all in the similar boat, pool their purchasing power and bid out a materials recovery facility. It was my intent to join that in January. This is where we start crossing the line between my commentary and Kristen's. She had some objections to the way that the agreement was worded. And now, thanks to her hard work, we're at a new language that is ready for the board's consideration. So Kristen, if you would jump in at that point.
Sure. I mean, the agreement that was in place was just, was very old. I don't think anyone at the county level had really looked at it carefully. There was typographical errors all throughout it. So when this was first brought to us to look at, I said, you know, can I just clean this up, basically? Can I make it more clear? There was inconsistent terms used throughout. It was a little bit ambiguous. So I spoke with the county solicitor, and she agreed with me. When she looked at it, she sort of inherited it and agreed that it needed to be cleaned up. So the substance of the contract is the same as was presented, you know, months ago, but it's really just a cleaner version. And again, because it's an intermunicipal agreement, it's something that needs to be approved through a resolution. So the resolution authorizes you to enter this joint contract with the county to be able to use the county's contractor for picking up your recycling. And it's a three-year term. It would automatically renew after three years unless you give notice that you don't want to continue with it. You'd have to give a 90-day notice. But as Luke indicated, this was, this is the best offer as far as either paying for your recycling, or if the market were to change within the next three years, you to be paid, paid for recycling. So at this point in time, this is the best option in terms of the financial expenditure for collection of your recyclables.
Okay, any questions? Jason?
No, not really.
You want to make a motion?
I'm going to be honest. I was kind of a little sidetracked. I was going to say it. Maybe you could, Kyle.
So do I have a motion to approve Resolution 13 of 2020 for the intermunicipal agreement between the County of Chester and participating municipalities to provide processing and marketing and service for recyclable materials?
I'll say it.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, Luke, you're up again.
Me again, believe it or not. So this is the third public meeting where we've had a conversation about adopting an employee manual. And included in your packet this evening are actually two copies of the employee manual. And I certainly mean no disrespect for the contributions that Ken made to the conversation that we've had in the previous two meetings. But his departure, when we were down to just one policy issue where we were trying to hammer out a proposal, and he was the chief lead on it, I frankly don't know where the board stands. So the reason you have two versions in front of you is because the section that refers to vacation for employees has two alternate to vacation for employees has two alternate versions. If I could just summarize them very briefly, one is a lump-sum model, which means on January of each year, an employee receives leave in an amount that is commensurate with their seniority at the township. They may use that leave over the course of the year, and if they sever employment with the township after providing proper notice, they're compensated for their unused leave. The other version is, I would call it an accrual system, which means that each pay period, and there's 26 pay periods in the year, an employee earns 1/26th of the leave that they're entitled to, which is a great program. Where we run into problems is in the implementation, because we have employees who've been here for literally decades. And the question is, when did they earn the current leave they have? Did they earn it in the preceding year, or did they earn it in the current year? And depending on when you start the clock on the accrual system, you could have the net effect of depriving an employee of the leave effective January 1 that they would have had under the old system. So, you know, so if I'm an employee and I'm entitled to two weeks vacation a year, and we switch to an accrual system, on January 1 of next year, an employee could not have two weeks to spend immediately. So the way we've handled the accrual option that's before you is that we have a note on implementation. And that note is that accrual for 2021 began on January 1 of 2020, which means that we all would have, be in the process of earning our leave for next year, right now, this year. So I have both those options in front of you, because honestly, I don't have a read on the board on, now that we've lost the supervisor. I'm going to tell you, I'm not impartial. I have a strong preference for the lump-sum model. And the reason that I have a, this is, it's not a very flattering thing for an administrator to say, it is vastly easier to administer a lump-sum system. If you can imagine an employee trying to figure out how much leave they're going to have in January of next year, I got to, I got to break out a, I don't know, a logarithmic chart that shows their anniversary date and the number of pay periods between now and then. It is, in my opinion, more complex to administer, and we are a small organization. So I won't pretend to be impartial, I prefer the lump-sum model.
So Luke, what, is that across, I know this is a tough question, but are you speaking on behalf of the majority, or have you guys had an opportunity to talk about this? Because it's important to...
Well, I know you had a conversation with members of staff who were concerned about an accrual model. I'm going to greatly simplify or generalize their statement. Their comments were, they don't want a situation where on January 1, 2021, they have left leave to use under the new system than they had under the old system. So in the accrual model you have before you, we've resolved that by basically backdating when accrual for 2021 began, and that would be January of 2020. So the, both systems will result in an employee having the leave they would expect to have on January 1. So that particular objection has been mitigated in both versions. Again, you know, the primary difference to my way of thinking is just the simplicity of administration.
All right, and Kristin, do you have any comments on this before Jason and I discuss it?
No, it's really a policy decision, and it's really just focusing on page 31. That's where the Section 406 paid vacation is. I think the, again, my review that I've had of the different municipal, and it's limited to the municipalities that I represent, I have not seen the accrual method. So I really did rely upon, since your last meeting, relied upon Luke to try to find examples, and he put together the accrual language, which is in the one version. But I think more the norm is what you saw in the first version of this, which is the nonaccrual policy.
Okay. All right, so, and that's the one that you're calling the lump-sum, so to speak, Luke?
Correct. That vacation is awarded on a single day, January 1 of each year.
Right. Jason, any comments on this?
No, I think, I think the lump-sum, I think, would be probably easier.
So we'll call that the nonaccrual for purposes of the resolution, I would assume?
There's no need to change any of the language in the resolution, but the question would be, which of those two plans is Lisa V. going to staple to the resolution?
Understood. So Jason, are you good with making a motion on this, then?
Yes. I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 14 of 2020 to adopt the East Brandonwine Township New Employee Handbook for East Brandonwine Township Employees.
And I will second. All in favor?
Which, but make it clear, guys, you mean with the nonaccrual policy, correct?
Correct. And that's what we would be signing anyway, so I thought that was understood, but yes. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so Luke, again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 15 of 2020, transferring funds from the Open Space Fund to the General Fund.
Yeah, well, I feel like I've been pretty busy this week. This is the point where I admit I didn't get my homework done. The deliverable for the ordinances and resolutions, it was going to be Resolution 15, was a transfer from the Open Space Fund to the, to the, I'm sorry, to the General Fund, for monies that were spent in the years 2014 through 2018, where those expenditures could have come from the earmarked money and not the General Fund. There is a pretty substantial amount of research that needs to be done to look at each of those transactions and determine if that is consistent with both the MPC and the code that we have in our zoning code. I didn't get the work done, and I would think that any work that I do get done should go to Kristin before it goes to you for review. So this is still on your agenda, but there's fortunately, and you had also mentioned that I have heard over the course of the week that there is an individual who wanted to comment on this potential, but can't actually happen tonight, agenda item.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and table that, then. And then...
Luke, might I say something regarding this resolution?
Sure.
Would you mind, Kyle?
No.
I just like to put some of my thoughts out there for consideration regarding this issue.
I'm sorry, real quick, Jim. Jim, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to end, and then we're going to turn to public comment on agenda items for this, because it is an agenda item.
Okay.
So I'll open it up for public comment on agenda items. Go ahead.
I had heard this spoken of last month at the board's, your meeting, and it jumped out at me. And on the surface, it seems like a reasonable thing to do. You know, basically, you had park projects that were funded from the General Fund that could have been funded from the Recreation Fund. And what was done, they were funded from the General Fund on an annual basis, and with a balanced budget. And what you're looking to do now is to look back to see if you can move some of that money from the Recreation Fund to the General Fund. And my primary concern there is that you will be removing flexibility for future projects, recreation projects, both, you know, at the community park, at Bonsville Mill, and elsewhere in the township. And so you, right now, you have a pool of dedicated money for that purpose that gives you the flexibility of handling projects that come up. If you move as much as you possibly can of funds that were spent in the past that could have been, come from the Recreation Fund, I think that you may be solving a short-term problem with regard to a potential shortfall in projected revenue for the township, but I think you'll be hurting yourself strategically in the long term. So I would ask that if you're going to consider doing this, that you take a look at what it is exactly that you need in the short term to address the annual budget this year, but to leave as much as you can in the Recreation Fund to give you the flexibility for planning in the future. And it's a kind of a forward-looking idea versus looking back to see what we could have done, looking forward and leaving as much flexibility for yourself as you can.
I appreciate the insight.
I think, Jim, I think the, what we were trying to do is it wasn't to just stick back in the general funds and just be disappeared or pay off for any short term, it was just to allow a little bit more flexibility, you know, to put in our capital reserves for the Township Building or whatnot that we're lacking now. Not saying that we couldn't, you know, use that account if we had to for a park or anything, it just gives us that flexibility while we can.
Okay, so you're looking to move that to capital reserves?
That's what I was suggesting. I mean, just general funds, my point was saying general funds was just to, basically, you know, the general funds, it can be moved into the capital reserves and moved back to the general funds, we have to. So that's all.
When I think of general funds, when I think of general funds, I think of the annual budget.
That wasn't, that was not my intent. I was just, I wanted to replenish that as we could and then just allow us to have a little more flexibility. That's all.
Okay.
Wasn't to slash your budget or the Bonsville Mill budget, or their committee, it's more just for, I think just to use what funding.
Yeah, I'm not looking just at Bonsville Mill, I'm just looking at the township as a whole and allowing us the greatest flexibility. If you're, if you're looking at a different scenario that gives you additional flexibility beyond just spending on recreation projects, I can see that.
I think we also still have to do another good, you know, when we do update the comprehensive plan to look into our, look at our parks and our recreation in the future, you know, where else we're going to need, you know, where else we could have a potential park with the new developments and whatnot, and try to do some planning that way, which is, I'm sure is going to be brought up the task force.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, well, we're going to, we're going to probably revisit this in the next meeting anyway, so it gives Luke and Kristin some time to get some verbiage figured out. All right, so since I did open it up to public comment, I have not seen anything else on the, I'm double-checking, nothing else has popped up. Luke, have you got anything else?
No, we're down from a high of 49 members to 15, so I think the items of interest have tailed off.
Understood. All right, so I'm going to close the public comment time and go to notices. An executive session of the Board of Supervisors was held on May 21, 2020 for the purposes of discussing personnel matters, and an executive session of the Board of Supervisors was held on June 11, 2020 at 5:00 p.m. for purpose of discussing legal matters. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Have a good night.
Aye.